Get your invite.
Good evening and welcome. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on Tuesday, April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Pursuant to section thirteen of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the resolution of regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February two thousand and twenty-four through January two thousand and twenty-five. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution was published in the January twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting also has been posted to the municipal website, princetonnj.gov/calendar. Notice that all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet and the Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on Tuesday, January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Public comment is heard by the board after an applicant's representatives have finished their presentations and have been questioned by board members and staff. Those wishing to comment orally when the time comes should virtually raise your hand by clicking on the reactions button or the raise hand icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen, or if participating by phone by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes or less. A countdown clock will be used to help speakers keep track of time, and speakers who exceed three minutes will be interrupted. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. Gary, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Badikheimer?
Here.
Ms. Capizoli?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Ms. Nuka?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Perlmutter? Ms. Perlmutter. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Ms. Sacks?
Here.
Mr. Taylor? Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. With announcements, I first would apologize to members of the public for being a little late to start tonight. We had some connection problems. There are thirty members of the public who are in the attendees' room. That's just FYI. And Mr. Lesko, do you have an announcement as well regarding upcoming meetings?
Yes, I do, Madam Chair. Thank you, and good evening, members of the Planning Board and members of the public. The meeting originally scheduled for May second, I believe, was the date, which would have been the next meeting of this board, has been pushed back to May twenty-third. So no meeting on the second. That meeting will be on the twenty-third, and I expect we'll discuss the three forty-four NASA application.
Great. Thank you. I also want to let all of the board and the public know about a public open house for a concept design for Heinz Plaza. The Engineering Office sent around a flyer today. It says this will be a dynamic and interactive workshop where attendees can come and go as they please. It is taking place from five to seven PM on May second at the Princeton Public Library Community Room. So the room right off of Heinz Plaza or on Heinz Plaza that opens up to the plaza. So again, a public open house for a concept plan for Heinz Plaza, May second, five to seven, interactive, come and go as you please. Any other? I happen to think Heinz Plaza is just about perfect. So I'll be interested to see what all the ideas are for improving it. Are there any other announcements from board members or staff? Seeing none, let us move to subcommittee reports. Mr. Cohen, is there a report from the site plan?
Yes. So we met just yesterday, and we reviewed two applications. One from Princeton Academy of the Sacred Heart, which is before the board this evening. And we did conclude that it was indeed a minor site plan, that it should be categorized as such. But obviously, because it's a major subdivision, the board still needs to review it. So that's why it's before the board tonight. And the other application we reviewed was from Princeton University. Had to do with some minor modifications to the art museum. Basically putting some screening up at the roof level to screen solotube light transfer devices that will help to bring natural daylight into the gallery spaces. They projected above the, you know, the level of the parapet, so they needed to add some screening for that, and they also had some design details relating to re-cladding the existing building, which was the Marquand Building, Marquand Library, which was the one remaining part of the of the old art museum, and had been presented with sort of incomplete design detail at the time of the original application, and they have since finalized the design for that. They presented that as well. And the committee, again, found it qualified as a minor site plan, and because there were no variances or other special circumstances, we recommended it to the chair, to Ms. Wilson, for administrative approval.
Okay. Is there a ten-day public notice requirement if there are no? Okay.
That's correct.
Good. Thank you for that. Any other subcommittee reports? I don't think so. Okay. Then let's move on to applications. The first is from Princeton Academy of the Sacred Heart. This is a preliminary and final major subdivision and minor site plan on Great Road and Drake's Corner Road. This is block three zero one, lots one, two, and three. It's file number P twenty-three twenty-three dash four one seven SPF slash PM. Mr. Mueller, can you speak to proper notice and jurisdiction?
Yes, approved publication and service of proper, and the board has jurisdiction.
Thank you. Mr. Lesko, you want to get us started?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair. Jerry, I'm ready to be sworn in whenever you are.
Yeah. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
Yes, I do.
So sworn or affirmed?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to share my screen. I'm going to try to keep my presentations for the two cases tonight more brief than usual. So what I'm showing now is the NJ Parcel Explorer publicly available from Rowan University. This is somewhat the whole view of Princeton. I'll zoom into the northwest corner of town. And we're on the corner of the Great Road and Drake's Corner Road for the application before you this evening. It includes three current parcels. The largest parcel includes the Princeton Academy of the Sacred Heart, an independent K to eight boys' school. The other two parcels are currently have single-family residential houses on them, and the parcels are all within the RA and RB zones of the former township. The parcels are not located within any locally designated historic districts, though the lot with the school on it was designated as eligible for state historic district designation by the State Historic Preservation Office in two thousand and twenty, based on the structures in the northwest area of the lot. Additionally, the Princeton Master Plan includes the Manor House Building as a site that should be studied and may be appropriate for historic designation. None of these structures are being changed as part of this application, and the Historic Preservation Commission deferred review of the application. Essentially, the proposal will create five lots where three currently exist.
Justin, if I may interrupt for one second?
Here.
If we could mark is the two areas you showed as PB one and two.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead. Sorry.
So as I was starting to say, the proposal is to create five lots where three currently exist. Within that, a currently non-complying lot will become complying in relation to the minimum lot size of its own. A driveway that you see here will also be relocated. As Councilman Cohen stated before, the site plan application was classified as minor by the Site Plan Committee, though the application is before the board because of the associated subdivision application. No variants are being requested. And I will let the applicant further describe the proposal and hold my comments till after their presentation. Derek and Dan also have a engineering and zoning memo with a variety of comments. Thank you.
Okay. Derek and Dan, is there anything that you want to flag for the board before we hear from the applicant? Anything? Any red flags, anything of particular note? Mr. Weissman, actually, Jerry, why don't you swear in Dan and Derek right now?
Dan, if you raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
I do.
Just one or a firm.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everybody. There's really three things that I think the applicant should address that is worth bringing attention to. They're outlined in the memo. The first is the right-of-way width on Drake's Corner Road. Currently, it is substandard to the master plan roadway designation. It's designated as a local street, which requires a fifty-foot right-of-way. And Drake's Corner Road in this area ranges in right-of-way between thirty-three and forty-one and a half feet. So with that, the subdivision ordinance requires that additional right-of-way be dedicated to the municipality. As the subdivision is only on half of the side of the street, only half of the required width to get to that fifty foot would be required to be dedicated. But that's an item that should be addressed by the applicant. Additionally, the subdivision ordinance requires subdivision applications to reconstruct existing roadways that are contiguous to the property to the center line of the road. The engineering and zoning memo outlines the required widths that are required. Great Road is a secondary arterial, contains eleven-foot lanes and three-foot shoulders, which meet the spatial standards, and Drake's Corner Road is classified again as a local street, contains approximately nine-foot lanes, and also meets those spatial standards. The applicant should either update the plans to reflect these roadway reconstructions or request a waiver from this requirement. And thirdly, the, again, the subdivision ordinance requires sidewalks and bicycle paths for some final subdivision applications where the Princeton Community Master Plan calls for future sidewalk or bicycle path networks in that area. They're required to be constructed, or where no such sidewalk or bicycle path exists, or construction of one is not imminent. There would be a payment in lieu of, to the municipality for the future construction of such a path. This hasn't been reflected on these plans. The applicant should either construct and install a path. Again, this is only on the Great Road portion, not on the Drake's Corner. But they should either construct and install this path or provide payment in lieu of, or request waiver from this requirement. And those were the three things that I just wanted to touch on before the applicant presented that I thought was worthwhile for the board to hear.
Okay, great. Anything to add, Mr. Bridger?
Yes, Madam Chair, there's a existing baseball field that's going to be bisected by the Great Road subdivision, so this is, the use of the school is a conditional use in the RA and RB zones, so if that lot changes ownership, that baseball field would no longer be permitted there. We've asked that to be removed, but I'm asking that the applicant speak to what their plans are for that that baseball field. So that's all I have.
Okay.
And if I may ask you a question, Dan, you talked about of the three, your three items, you talked about one of the options for the applicant is to seek waivers. What about the first one? Is that even?
A waiver could be sought. It's part of the, it's in the subdivision ordinance. A waiver could be sought if in the future somewhere down the road Drake's Corner were to be improved. Right-of-way would have to be grabbed at that time, which would require another subdivision application. So if there was a time to obtain that right-of-way now would be that time.
Yeah. Thank you.
Good. You know, I feel like I should say, and maybe I should have said this before, I do not believe that I have a conflict, but I do want to disclose that my son, who is now thirty-three, went to Princeton Academy of the Sacred Heart for for third through eighth grade, maybe fourth through eighth grade, not really sure. Anyway, I want to confirm, Mr. Mueller, with you that I have no conflict. I have not sent checks to the school in a long time for tuition.
Yeah, you do not have a conflict.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Mr. Casey, are you representing?
I am indeed, yes.
Academy tonight. Thank you. Welcome.
Yeah, well, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Board. It's an honor to be here with you tonight. In the spirit of full disclosure, I had the honor of being a trustee at Princeton Academy for seven years and am am still helping them out. And tonight, Justin did a lovely job of recapping what we're here for tonight. Essentially, we are we're carving out two new lots that we're going to bank, I guess is probably a decent way to say it. There's no development or construction proposed at this time. The, we are making, so we also own, just so everyone understands, we own forty-one and seventy-three Drake's Corner also. And so in this subdivision, we're making seventy-three Drake's, a conforming three-acre lot. Forty-one Drake's will remain conforming, but it'll be shrunk a little bit down to four acres. So it'll go four acres, three acres, and then the new lot that we're proposing, where the driveway would be relocated eventually, would be a three-acre lot as well. So, so the Great Road Lot, right? The plan is to market it all, I think is probably a nice way of saying it, but there's no buyers right now. I'm sure that people who are here in the audience are are inquisitive and wanting to know, and we certainly are doing this to help sustain our school. As many people know, we announced the closure of our school last year, but through some goodwill and some donations and a lot of hard work and just love for Princeton Academy, the school is going to remain open. Part of that is tied to this project, I would say. So currently, forty-one and seventy-three Drake's Corner Road, if you were to drive by them, you could see that they're for sale. And the idea here is, God, to not have anything built, honestly. In terms of what is going to be on the Drake's Corner Lot Road, the new road, the new lot, I'm sorry, we have been in in pretty pretty good negotiations with the Ridgeview Conservancy about that lot. And I can read to you what Chris Barr from, on behalf of Ridgeview Conservancy, said that he said, "I think it would be fine to say that Princeton Academy is in advanced negotiations with Ridgeview Conservancy, a local land trust to purchase proposed Lot three point oh two for conservation, and that's subject to further confirmation approval from the Ridgeview funding sources and that type of thing." So ideally, that's what we would love to have happen, is that nothing changes on that lot, except that it becomes preserved. So that's where we are right now. As I said, nothing is planned in terms of development. We're not here to seek any variances for what we're trying to accomplish. The idea would be that whoever does ultimately buy one of these lots and wants to build on it, they're going to have to come back and get get whatever approvals that are required for planning and site plan. This is simply to carve these conforming lots out so that we have them and can sell them if the if it's going to help our school. But the idea would be to try to keep them friendly to friendly owners and hopefully maybe never develop them, but I can't speak to that with with complete clarity. As for Mr. Bridger's comment about the baseball field, so we did, the idea for the Great Road Lot was to whoever was going to buy that. And we did, we did have a couple of people that were interested in it, and the idea would have been to to get an easement or some sort of deed restriction to allow us to keep our baseball field there for, you know, four or five years, and potentially the routing of our cross-country field would have remained the same during that time, and then ultimately, that would have burned through, and we would have to move the baseball field back onto the remaining campus. So that, so point being is like, we're always thinking of creative ways to maintain the integrity of eleven-twenty-eight and the past campus, while at the same time, understanding the financial needs to run a K through eight, all-boys Catholic school in Princeton, New Jersey, which is challenging. So I have tonight with me our engineer who will testify about the plan and who prepared it, Eric Rupnerain from Goldenbaum Bale. I also have Tom Marr, who is a current trustee at Princeton Academy. Should there be any additional questions that you might have, but that's all I have for now. I'd be happy to introduce Eric and get him sworn and have him tell you about the plan.
That sounds good, and we should swear, Mr. Marr, as well, just in case he he testifies, we won't have to stop and do that again. So, Mr. Mueller?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Yeah, if both of you could raise your right hand. Okay, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give, is it, will be the truth?
Yes.
I do.
Good. And could each of you spell your, state your full name and spell your last name?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Mine is Tom Marr, and the last name is spelled M-E-A-G-H-E-R. A very good Irish name.
Eric Rupnerain, R-U-P-N-A-R-A-I-N.
Thank you.
I'd call Eric to testify, please. Yeah, Eric, you've testified before this board before, correct?
Correct.
And you've been, you've been an expert witness before this board, correct?
Correct.
Madam Chair, can I qualify him as an expert, or would you like me to voir dire him?
Mr. Rupnerain, can you talk a bit about your credentials, your degrees, your license in New Jersey, et cetera?
Certainly. So I'm currently licensed in the states of New Jersey and Pennsylvania. I've been licensed in New Jersey since, I believe, two thousand and three. My licenses are currently valid and in good standing. I received a bachelor's degree from Villanova University in nineteen ninety-seven in civil engineering and a master's from the same in two thousand and one. Since graduating in ninety-seven, I've been practicing almost exclusively in the civil engineering land development field, representing both private homeowners and developers for residential and commercial projects throughout the state.
Thank you. We accept your qualifications.
Thank you.
Eric, if you could, just walk us through the major subdivision application that you've created for us, please.
Do you need to share your screen? Is there, are there things to look at as you speak? I'm sorry, I don't mean to.
No, 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 I think it's a good idea.
Interrupt, but it's typically, you know, the the board is looking at a plan as the engineer describes what's going on there, so I think it would be helpful if we could do that.
Yeah, sure. I can share my screen, if I think. Let's go. Hold on here. Hopefully, nothing else pops up. God knows.
Yeah, we can see now, we can see the I guess the first sheet of your
All right, great.
Plan PDF.
All right.
Can you see it?
Yeah, I can see it.
To Mr. Rupnerain?
I can see it.
Okay.
So the current proposal before the board is for subdivision of three lots into five lots. As Mr. Casey indicated, the total parcel is about forty-nine point six acres, and currently, there are two existing residential dwellings that fronts on Drake's Road. Those dwellings are lots identified as Lot one point zero one and Lot two point zero one. Lot one point zero one is an oversized lot for the existing zoning, and Lot two point zero one, that is an undersized lot. What the applicant is proposing tonight is to shift the lot lines between Lots two point zero one and one point zero one, essentially moving that lot line to the right or to the east along Drake's Corner Road, and then likewise, the westerly property line of Lot two point zero one, that line will shift to the west. By moving the lot lines around, what the applicant is proposing is to reduce Lot one point zero one to four acres, which is conforming to the zone, and to increase Lot two point zero one to three acres, which also makes that lot conforming to the zone. Presently, Lot two point zero one, that is an undersized lot, and the applicant is bringing that lot into conformity. In addition to modification of the two existing lots, the applicant is also proposing a new lot that will front on Drake's Corner Road. That lot is identified as Lot three point zero two on the map in front of the board, and that lot will be approximately three acres in size and meets all of the bulk standards for this particular zone. Within this existing lot is the driveway access from the school's property to Drake's Corner Road. Any construction on Lot three point zero two will require relocation and reconstruction of the existing driveway. What we've also showed on this plan is to the west of the proposed lot line for Lots three point zero two is where the new driveway will be located, and the new driveway will be shifted to the west, and access to the new drive will also be provided from Drake's Corner Road. Construction of this new driveway will require tree removal. The applicant has located all of the existing trees within the limits of disturbance that will be impacted by construction of the new driveway. The trees are located and they've been cited on the site plan that's been submitted as part of the applicant's file. In addition to the trees that will be removed, several utilities that currently runs along the existing driveway and to the pump house that's located in this southerly, south-westernly corner of the property, those utilities will also have to be relocated in the event that there's construction on the new lot that we're creating. Those, the relocation of those utilities, excuse me, will be located along the new westerly property line of Lots three point zero two, and will also follow along the northerly property line, or what would be the rear property line of Lot three point zero two. Essentially, that is the bulk of the construction activity that would be required if the board votes favorably to approve the subdivision. No other construction is being proposed to either Lots one point zero one or two point zero one. And finally, the third lot that the applicant is proposing to create is Lot, excuse me, is Lot three point zero one. This lot is, will front and provide, and access and frontage to this lot will be provided from Great Road, which runs along the easterly property line. This lot will be a fully conforming lot. Again, the applicant is not proposing any improvements at this time. The applicant is only seeking approval to create the lots. After all of the subdivision work is completed, all of the current improvements that's located on the school's property will remain almost in the exact same location, again, with the exception of the almost in the exact same location, again, with the exception of the existing driveway to Great Road. Um, excuse me, the existing driveway to Drake's Corner Road. That is the only improvement that's anticipated as part of this subdivision. The applicant is not proposing the creation of any additional impervious surface. As a matter of fact, relocation of the driveway will actually reduce the total amount of impervious surface on the property.
And you intend to relocate that driveway whether or not you sell the new lot three point zero two um, to for for preservation or for a home?
So, great, I, one of my notes right here is that in the event that uh, we do come to terms with someone like the Ridgeview Conservancy, the the uh, the driveway would remain where it is. That would be part of the, so it would not be moved. And I'll I'll say that um, not to cut off Eric, um, in terms of services, currently forty-one Drake's Corner Road is septic. And there is the ability, though, um, if and when we sell forty-one Drake's Corner, um, if a buyer came along and said, hey, it would be more marketable if you were to give me access to sewer, there is a sewer main on the Great Road that we could give a sewer line easement across that little peninsula of property that we have down here into uh, into Great Road. Um, seventy-three Drake's uh, was a decommissioned septic probably, I'm guessing probably five, six years ago, and is tied into now the main sewer main that is on the campus that is, can you see my cursor?
Yeah.
Yeah, look at that, right there. So this lot is tied into here. There would also be um, an easement that would be created for sewer service from the new proposed lot three point oh two to um, to that sewer main uh, as well for um, the new lot on Great Road. I think Eric, we said, could tie straight into um, the Great Road, I believe, or there would be another sewer easement to tie into our main on our campus for that lot. So no septics would be the uh, the outcome.
Correct. The proposal is for the two new lots is to provide an access easement through the school's property to connect into the existing main.
That's right.
Okay.
Um, I don't know, Eric, um, I don't think I have any other questions of Eric. Um, just looking at my notes here quickly.
Would it be Eric that's to the question of the right-of-way adjustment and um, the reconstruction of the roadway and sidewalks and bike paths? Is that is that Mr. Rupnerin, or is that someone else?
Yeah, that's Mr. Rupnerin. I mean, we'll have to, as per the the comments um, from Dan, we're gonna have to update the plan to show that. Uh, we have no objection to granting of the right-of-way on Drake's Corner Road. Um, the the issue of payment of a walkway on Great Road. I know that um, that Dan had mentioned that. Um, I, there currently isn't any walkway up there. Um, we would ask for a waiver on that, on that request. Um, and the requirement, I don't think that one was proposed on Drake's Corner. Dan would have to to clarify that for me, but I don't think a a walk is anywhere on Drake's Corner Road either. So, so making that contiguous, we would ask that we not be required to do that, and I don't think that there is a requirement to do that. But that would have to come from Dan in terms of confirming that.
Yeah, I think he was talking only about hmm uh, Great Road, but I could be misremembering. Um, Mr. Cohen and then Mr. Wiseman?
Yeah, so in regard to the the side path on the Great Road, um, the question I have, I think, is is for Steph. Um, I know that there is a side path on the east side of portions of the Great Road. I know we've made some uh, efforts to try to extend it. And I'm wondering if Dan maybe knows or Justin knows where uh, those efforts currently stand, where where the existing path exists and where the efforts to extend uh, cur- currently stand. Because while I don't particularly envision a path going in on the west side of the Great Road, it could be very helpful to have some financial contribution towards the path on the east side if that is imminent and in the general vicinity.
Uh, Mr. Wiseman?
Yeah, I can jump in there. Uh, I did consult with the municipal engineer uh, regarding any future plans, uh, anything that's imminent in this area, um, and and uh, they indicated they were not aware of 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 anything that's imminent. Um, as for uh, where they exist, how how far down, uh, I don't know offhand.
Um, I I would be hesitant to just let it go altogether because this is a section of Great Road that um, doesn't have much of a shoulder and the site distance isn't great because you're going a little bit around a curve and over a hill and um, the, it's understandable, given the lay of the land and all, uh, that the path ends where it does on the east side of Great Road, but someday, um, we really need to try to extend that all the way to Cherry Valley Road. Um,
Yeah, I I feel like I remembered application in just the last two years for some kind of improvements on the lot that's directly across the Great Road here, where the 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 one that's on the corner of Bridgeview and the Great Road, and that we asked for some dedication of right-of-way there to be able to um, extend the side path, so um, yeah, I I second uh, Chair Wilson's concern with just letting granting this waiver because I think, like I say, there there's definitely an interest in extending the the path without knowing how imminent, yeah.
Um, thank you. Uh, Mr. Bridger?
Um, yeah, David is correct. It's a lot, a little bit uh, further down Great Road towards Stewart and PDS. I guess a little uh, south of Drake's Corners Road, they did dedicate the right-of-way. And I just checked near map and it looks like the the existing uh, multipurpose path ends right around where Great Road West is um, by Ten Acre Foundation. Thanks.
We're we're talking about the opposite side of the road from
Correct.
our lot. So to have us contribute towards a sidewalk that's on the other side?
In lieu of having to build one or pay for or pay the same amount for one on on um, the west side, yeah.
Well, I I would request a waiver. I mean, I I I know that there there are, there's case law currently on dedications of right-of-way in general and being a condition of approvals. I mean, this is, you're asking us to to contribute to something that's across the street that we don't own. Um, just because we happen to be on a part of a road that doesn't make sense for a sidewalk, so I'll leave it at that, but I don't think it's
It's it's in our sidewalk plan, Mr. Casey, so to say it doesn't make sense to have it. Um, is uh, I'm not sure what you're basing that on.
And and also, it's a, it's a shared pathway and it it greatly increases safety for pedestrians and people on bikes. Um,
It's a, it's a, it's on the sidewalk plan to be on our side or on the other side?
I believe on both sides, if I understood Mr. Wiseman's comments correctly.
Uh, that's correct. It's it's a shared use path, uh, so it's not specific to a side of the road.
Yep.
All right.
Um, is Mr. Rupnerin's uh, testimony concluded?
Yeah, I believe it is. Eric, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, I don't.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Mr. Wiseman, got your hand up?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to address Mr. Casey's question from earlier. Uh, there is no sidewalk or shared use path shown for Drake's Corner Road, so the only, the only path in question would be on Great Road.
And your your request, I have it actually printed out here, but I don't remember exactly what it says, Dan. Um, the the suggestion is um, uh, to build or pay toward the construction of um, the shared use path. Is that along the entirety of the Great Road frontage that Princeton Academy currently owns, or is it for the uh, area uh, in the, a- along the Great Road that's, that would be part of the new lot?
Uh, it it uh, it would be the along the entire property uh, for the subdivision in question, so it would be, it would be, it's, I think it's around a thousand feet. Um, that would be both both the proposed lot and the the academy slot.
And how is the um, payment in lieu uh, calculated? Is it by linear foot?
That would have to be worked out with the applicant, uh.
All right. I didn't know whether there there was a formula. Uh, okay. Um, thank you. Um, Councilwoman Sacks?
Yeah, so are are we saying, I'm sorry, I I might have missed this, but so if the property, if the parcel, one of these, if this parcel was sold, then that person who purchased it would be responsible or the academy as a condition of this, um, what what we're doing, uh, what we'd be granting tonight, uh, would be responsible? The latter, David?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. I mean, the only reason I I mention is that, you know, and and maybe there will be members of the public here who will speak to the really substantial community effort that recently went into saving this property and saving the school um, from uh, and and had that effort not taken place, um, I think we would all be here discussing something far less benign than the subdivision that we are. Um, I think it's, it was um, uh, you know, I I applaud that community effort. I know that the school has has been one of the, I I think one of, I'm assuming, um, that one of the reasons to to subdivide these properties is to um, as part of, uh, you know, uh, ensuring um, a a financially, um, um, you know, ensuring their financial future, shoring that up. Um, so I just, and I know that they are um, operating in a very thin uh, uh, shoestring budget, and I I just, I am concerned about um, imposing significant expenses on them, and and I don't know if this is, but I, that is, I just want to voice that concern, but um, I I think it's I want to be as supportive as possible of what the school is doing. I'm glad that we will continue to have them and that, um, as I said, that all we're here tonight discussing is the subdivision of two properties and not the wholesale eradication of this entire parcel of land, so.
Point taken. Thank you. David Cohen?
I guess, you know, in light of Ms. Sacks' comments, I'd like to, uh, if Jerry could maybe comment on the grounds for granting waivers. In other words, you know, is financial hardship, uh, suitable grounds for granting this kind of waiver, or what other basis uh, would we grant the waiver on?
Jerry, you're on mute.
The basic standards are the waiver request has to be reasonable. It has to come within the intent and purpose of the um, subdivision or site plan section from which the waiver waiver relief is sought has to apply to a specific piece of property, which seems weird, but that's in the uh, um, in the municipal land use, and what that really means, it can't be uh, an undifferentiated part of a whole series of lots which are all allotted the same. Um, and there has to be the practical difficulties or hardship to the applicant um, in terms of uh, if the uh, provision from which a waiver is sought is is granted. It is literally is enforced.
Yeah, if if I could add real quickly, um, in support of of what Jerry just said, so our our position was that um, as Ms. Sacks said, we're not in the financial position to um, be paying for engineering and additional sidewalks and that type of thing. So if it if it is to be a requirement of whoever comes back to develop that lot, that I think would be up to the board because there probably would be some planning board approval needed for the construction on that lot. Um, because a lot is a unique lot in terms of the the grade and and that type of thing. Um, in terms of the ability of of you all to grant a, an exception or a waiver here, um, ten B dash one twenty-nine does provide that, and it does say that um, the the planning board shall have the power to grant such exceptions from their requirements of subdivision or site plan approval as may be reasonable and within the general purpose and intent of the provisions of this chapter for subdivision or site plan review and approval. If the literal enforcement of one or more such provisions is impracticable or will exact undue hardship because of peculiar conditions pertaining to the land in question. So, this is not only do we have an undue hardship here, but the the lot itself, and I think Derek and Dan and Justin could even talk to it, like, it's a tough lot there on Great Road too in terms of installing a uh, a sidewalk, and it would be really expensive to inside install a sidewalk there, so, again, in support of the request, um, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Casey.
And could I just, following up, is it possible, Jerry, that we could um, impose this as a condition of a future purchaser of of one or both of those sites? I mean, I would feel far more comfortable with that. That that's something I could definitely get on board with.
If they, if they um, since they're abutting Great Road, um, but Justin, under what circumstances would somebody have to come back in for a site plan?
Uh, if someone were to build a house on three point oh one, then perhaps that would apply, but the remaining portion are about, you know, half of that, uh, probably a little more than half of the linear distance on Great Road, uh, is the academies. So, you know, I don't think they'll, they would be coming in for anything else.
Yeah, and I I think it's an open question as to whether the board can require an in-lug payment uh, for a sidewalk which is not on their side of the street, a a bike path and and pedestrian pass, when it's not on their side of the street. Um, I understand, and somebody pointed out, right, I guess it was Louise rightfully, that uh, it's a tricky road and uh, people on both sides of the street are going to be, do do use that path on the east side. The path, the portions of the path that's there.
Yeah. Okay. Um, thank you. Uh, Mr. Casey, do you have any other um, testimony to present?
I do not.
Um, are there any other question, Ms. Pearl Mutter? You have a question? You're on mute.
Um, I'd like to shift gears a little bit. Um, it was mentioned that uh, there's a driveway and that uh, in order to move it, they would replace some, they would be tearing down some trees. Can somebody address what's actually being taken down? How much is, how many trees are being taken down? Is it possible to? Is there a landscaping plan? Is it possible to move the driveway so that fewer trees are taken down and less uh, impact on the environment?
Thanks for that question. Um, Mr. Rupnerin, can you speak to the design for the for the re built, reoriented um, driveway and whether what what the impact on the trees is there?
Certainly, Madam Chair. Um, so the proposed relocation of the driveway in this portion of the property, which is going to be the area to the west of proposed lot three point zero two, that area is
of proposed lot 3.02, that area is almost entirely wooded. And the simplest route to reconstruct the driveway will be a straight line from Drake's Corner Road intersecting the existing driveway. Regardless of which direction we move the driveway, be it to the east or to the right, there are trees in that area that's going to be impacted. What we looked at is how can we, what location would create the least amount of impervious coverage, have the least amount of runoff and likewise create the least amount of potential construction cost for the applicant? And all of those led us essentially to a straight to a straight section of new driveway to connect to Drake's Corner Road to the existing driveway. That's going to minimize the amount of the land disturbance. It's going to minimize the amount of impervious coverage that we're creating. And we do believe, given the fact that almost this entire area is wooded, that it's going to minimize the amount of trees that would have to be removed. The applicant has located all of the trees that we anticipate requiring removal on the property, and they've been made a part of the plan set. Um, but as Mr. Casey indicated, right now, there is no plan to reconstruct that driveway. If lot 3.02 is preserved, then the driveway as it currently exists right now will remain.
Um, okay. Do you happen to have that, um, sheet as part of this? Is it further along in this, um, in this, uh, set of sheets that you're showing right now?
Sheet number four shows all of the locate, all of the trees.
I don't think we're looking at sheet number four right now.
No, that is sheet number, I believe that's sheet number three in the plan set.
Should we be looking at this?
Yeah, I would like to see, uh, I, I would like to just take a quick look, um, and, but I would also be comfortable, um, with a requirement that if they relocate the driveway, um, they uh, consult with our arborist, um, in, in case, you know, by making a small bend in the road or otherwise, a, a small adjustment that doesn't uh, increase costs a lot, um, they can, um, you know, avoid a particularly important tree or something like that.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I don't know that I have that sheet, Eric. Um, and I, and I also know in talking to, to Justin, I think he mentioned yesterday at, um, at site plan that, um, before the installation of the driveway, if it ever happens, um, hopefully it doesn't happen, um, that shade tree would have to be involved in it. So there would be
Okay.
an administrative review of it. Uh, Justin can confirm that with me, but I'm pretty certain that's what he said yesterday.
Uh, it's actually, whoops, it's, it's the landscape committee. Not, not the shade tree.
Yeah, a, a condition could be to, uh, uh, have review of that tree plan, uh, by either staff or the landscape subcommittee.
I, I would, I would say by, um, Mr. Sapadar and the landscape subcommittee. Yeah. Mr. Cohen, and then Carrie, you've got your hand up? Go ahead, David.
Yeah, I just, um, wanted to make sure that we had addressed all of the possible waivers that Mr. Weisman mentioned. I don't recall us discussing the, uh, requirement to reconstruct the roadway uh, to the center of the road for the, the abutting roadways and, I just, I, I want to make sure that gets discussed as well.
Right, yeah.
I just wanted to mention to Jerry, I don't believe that we entered the, um, slide from the applicant into, uh, as an exhibit.
Yeah, let's do that. So that was a slide, um. Is that part of the plan set?
It was. It was the first sheet of the plan set.
Yeah, I don't think we need to market a separate exhibit then, it's so identified.
So Carrie, were you saying that we did not identify an A1 or a second one, or are you?
The one, the one sheet that we, uh, referenced the entire meeting by the applicant, I didn't think that was as in that, I thought it was an exhibit, but no, it's part of the set, so it does not have to be an exhibit. So it's my error.
Okay, thanks. Keeping us all honest. So to Mr. Cohen's point, the requirement that, um, Princeton Academy reconstruct the existing roadway to the um, center line. I have waiver written next to that, or did, did you already indicate, Mr. Casey, that you're asking for a waiver for that? Or did I put that word in the wrong place?
No, I love, I think you put it in a great spot. No, I mean, it, it
Oh, no, I'm sorry. It was, it was for the one below it, uh, my note below it on the line, which would, had to do with sidewalks and bike paths. So you're asking for a waiver here as well?
Yeah, I mean, unless it can be made part of a condition of approval for, you know, further constructions, since nothing is proposed right now. Um, they're going to be, you know, they're going to be sitting vacant, right? Um, they're just going to be paper lots at this point. I would ask that if we're able to pass that on to whoever finally develops that lot, that would be terrific.
So pass along to the buyer slash developer of lot, what's the lot again, 3.0?
That's, that's going to be 3.01.
Oh, one. Okay.
Yeah, I think Jerry could just put that right in, well, like, right in his resolution, so that would be, that would work for us.
Right, so it would be, it would be kind of an interim waiver then. And then that, that would end when you sold the lot and maybe just when you sold the lot.
Uh, just a clarifying question. So the buyer of lot 3.01 is building the whole half of the road for all of the frontage within the subdivision now? Or just within their frontage?
I would think it would just be within their frontage, huh?
I hope it's just within our frontage.
I don't see how we can impose it upon, uh, that one new lot owner, assuming that happens.
This, and this relates to 3.01 and 3.02, both. Those are both the new lots.
Right. Yeah.
Uh, but logistically, I, I mean, I, I don't know if Mr. Weisman's here and has better words for this. But we're going to have someone widen and reconstruct a part of a road, then it's going to go back to what it was? You know, both before and after?
Mr. Weisman, can you, can you speak again to the current condition of the road and if this widening were required of the purchaser of the residential lots? Purchasers potentially 3.01 and 3.02, if 3.02 is developed? How that section of road would differ from what's there right now?
Both, both, uh, Great Road and Drake's Corner Road meet the spatial standards set in the master plan. So there wouldn't there wouldn't necessarily be a widening of the road. It would, uh, it would essentially be a repave, um, just in front of the lot. So you'd have, you could have a, a portion of, of the roadway, i- if, if this were to go this way, you'd only have, uh, two or 300 foot portion of a roadway that's repaved, and then either side of that would would remain as is.
As is, okay. Thanks, uh, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I, I just want to, um, support this waiver actually, uh, just as a, as a waiver and not as a condition that some future, uh, purchaser be required to do it. I think the reason for this requirement in our subdivision ordinance is with the expectation that when you do a subdivision, there's a lot of construction, there are a lot of utility connections that happen into the right of way, and you want to bring the road back to a good condition. After all, that work has happened. Since none of that is anticipated here, um, except for maybe, I think the sewer connection to 3.01, uh, in the Great Road. You know, I, I don't think that we need to make this requirement. I think this is intended for other types of subdivisions.
Yeah. Thank you.
But I just wanted to get on the record that we considered it and, and we have a good reason.
Yes. Agreed. Um, other questions from board members for the applicant before we go to public comment?
If I could just clarify one, one point too, um, so we have been in discussions to sell or to, to enter a relationship with the Ridgeview Conservancy, for example. Right? And the idea would be that everything stays the same. Right? There's the road doesn't change, or you would never even know, um. I just want to make sure that in the event that that happens, that there, that I'm not missing something that's going to trigger a improvement, a site improvement to Drake's Corner Road. And I, I think the answer to that is no, because of what we just talked about. But I just want to make sure so that because that would be prohibitively expensive for someone like Ridgeview Conservancy to take on.
Right. I mean, my assumption, and I, and I gather from seeing Mr. Cohen's slight head shake that it's his too, and, and, uh, interested in what other members think, that if these, either of these properties are sold purely for preservation and no development at all, then the purchaser would be relieved of uh, these improvement requirements.
I, I don't think that's what David was suggesting.
That not what you were suggesting?
No, I proposed just granting the waiver. We had some discussion about making it a condition that they would have to do these improvements if it was, if there was a future purchaser, but I was advocating not to do that. And just
Even for the, even for the multi-use pathway, I thought you were advocating not to do it for the road and for, for the road repaving.
Right. I was, for the road repaving, that's
Right. Um, okay.
So, so if someone does come along who's going to deed restrict these lots and concert and put them in a conservation easement, for example, they're still going to have a requirement to make a road improvement.
No, I, 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 no, they will not.
David was just proposing going even, I, that, that I think we, I'm assuming could all get on board with, but I think David was proposing going even farther, right, David? You were basically saying, um, even if someone did purchase the property and was going to develop it, that you were okay with leaving, relieving them of this obligation. Was that what you were saying?
Right, so 3.02, if it doesn't go ahead with the review of conservancy, they're still not, as I understand it, their sewer connection is going to be through an easement through the, uh, the academy property. It's not going to be, there is no sewer to connect to in Drake's Corner Road. So they're not going to be disturbing the pavement. And my understanding of this requirement to repave the road has to do with damage to the road during construction. So I, I am, yes, I'm going further, and I'm saying there should just be a waiver for, i- i- a waiver entirely for this requirement of repaving half of the roadway on both the Great Road and Drake's Corner Road.
Right.
Not, not to be difficult, but conceivably, there could be other, other reasons why if someone were to purchase the lot and, and, and develop the lot, that they could disturb the pavement if they're in, despite the intention of the ordinance, David.
So I'll let Dan speak to that. We do have requirements for restoration of pavement.
Yeah.
Even for a single family, I think.
So it's, the question is whether we would need to impose that here, or whether that just goes with as part of our municipal requirement.
Right. Right.
And, and, uh, you're absolutely right. Uh, if, if there's other utilities that would connect into Drake's Corner or Great Road, uh, be it water, electric, communications, gas, uh, any work in the public right of way does require a permit to excavate and occupy the right of way. Um, part of that permit is a bond for the restoration of the roadway. Um, and the roadway must be reconstructed for the trenches that were excavated into the roadway, um, per the municipal design standards. And if they're not, then, then that's what the, the bond that's held for is, is, is held to make any repairs that are not satisfactory.
Okay. Just a clarification on my own behalf. Um, it's negotiations with Ridgeview Conservancy with lot 3.01, I thought that's what it was, but maybe it's, is it 3.02?
3.02.
3.02. All right, thank you.
Which is the one on, um,
Drake's Corner Road.
Drake's Corner, yeah.
Where the, the secondary driveway is. So, I, again, I don't want to, I, I feel like I might put my foot, put my mouth here at some point, and I apologize, I, I appreciate your patience. But in, so if someone purchases lot 3.01 on the Great Road, and they are not going to develop it, and it's going to be in the conservancy, what is the outcome of payment towards the sidewalk? But there's no, if nothing is planned for development.
I think the board needs to, I, I think that's maybe the next item the board was going to discuss it. But it has to address that, obviously.
Okay.
Board member opinions?
So we're just closing the loop on the repaving. Are we going, I mean, it's functionally the same what David is proposing, the waiver and, uh, you know, but can we just? Wh- where are we landing with that? So?
My understanding is that, um,
I mean, are we doing a waiver or are we
We're, we're, yeah. Yes, we're, uh, we would put a waiver in there, yes.
Okay.
Unless somebody objects, you know?
Yes.
We can hear from other board members.
Uh, uh, right, I mean, yeah.
I think, I think we should grant the waiver, yeah.
And so the sidewalk question, is this the original, the sidewalk that we were talking about before, or this, or we're on to something new now?
We were talking about it before.
Yeah, the question of the multi-use pathway, um, on the west side of Great Road, along the frontage of the new lot.
On the east side of
3.01. On the west.
I'm sorry, I thought we were talking about the, uh, multi-use path on the other side. Well, whatever.
Well, we're talking about the multi-use path, but I thought that it had been made clear that, um, uh, it would be a stretch for this board to justify, well, if the, if the purchaser of the, if we're talking about, um, imposing a requirement on a future purchaser, and they were willing to make a payment in lieu that could be used across the street, then potentially there could be a, you know, a, a, an amount negotiated with the town for, um, X number of feet of multi-use pathway that's equal to the frontage on the west side. But that, that is the, that is the question be for us now, as I understand it. Ms. Nuka?
Um, on that question of, uh, the shared use path or sidewalk on Great Road, could the staff clarify exactly what the, um, master plan calls for in terms of proposed improvement on that stretch of Great Road?
I don't, I don't believe the master plan calls for anything directly in terms of what it's going to look like, uh, but it does mention, uh, it as part of the proposed, uh, sidewalk network. Uh, as well as the proposed under the, uh, I'm blanking on the terms right now, the, the bicycle plan, that's where it mentions the shared, uh, path.
And Justin, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So if, if this subdivision was, um, a, a commercial subdivision, then the developer would be required to install a shared use path or sidewalk on the west side of Great Road or on the east side to match up with what's there?
Uh, if, if it were a commercial, uh, anyone is held to the same standard. Um, you know, they could do the same, provide the in lieu or ask for a waiver. Uh, but generally, they might, you know, seek to install it if they were going to, you know, say, add better connectivity to a subdivision with inside, uh, inside the interior of the lot.
You know, say, add better connectivity to a subdivision with inside, uh, inside the interior of the lot.
Um, it, it seems like improving accessibility along this stretch of road is something that the town would like to see happen. Um, and that members of the planning board would like to see happen. Um. And. I guess I'm just hesitant about, uh. Allowing. A waiver on this, um, because of financial hardship, just also because of the precedent that sets.
Well, the other, the other issue that the board has to address is, um, can, can the board. Re- require that a in lieu payment be made, not for a path adjacent to the property, but across the street. I think it's a bit of a stretch.
But you did.
Why are we discussing it? I'm, I'm just confused. Like if Jerry, if you've said that it's a stretch, what, why? Why are we discussing it?
Well, that's just my, my view. I mean. You could make.
Well, we're discussing the requirement for the, for the west side. As, assuming the bike master plan, assuming the bike and ped. Um. Plan. That is an appendix to the master plan, shows a multi-use path on the west side. My understanding is that we can't, it does not, you're saying, David?
Well, what I understood again from Justin is that the, it calls for a, a multi-use bidirectional path. Along this stretch of road, it is not, it does not specify. Which side it should be on. And so there's every, you know, it's even possible. That while the existing path is on the east side, that there would be a suggestion that it cross. Sides of the road at some point, and that it'd be on the, on the west side along this stretch. We just don't know.
Does anybody have any idea how much money we're talking about?
I don't.
I don't either.
A lot, a little, or?
I mean, it's a thousand feet. And. You know, I wouldn't be surprised if the minimum cost would be twenty or thirty dollars a linear foot. Probably could be even more than that. So. Uh, Dan, am I crazy? I, I don't know what.
No, I, 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 it's hard to pin down, right? There's, there's circum- circumstances that, you know, clearing, removals, things like that. Um. A, a thousand feet, eight feet wide, if it were ten dollars a square foot. Uh, or twelve dollars a square foot, you're talking almost a hundred thousand dollars.
Just wanted some order of magnitude idea. I didn't know whether they're talking about five thousand dollars, a hundred thousand, you know?
Well, and that's without the engineering behind it, and it's. It's really steep there, too. So.
Um, yeah, this is, it's, it's frustrating because both sides of the street. Um, along that stretch are, are tough to work with because of the grade, because of the woods. The grade on the west side, the woods on the, or the woods on the east side. Um. You know, my, my frustration is that we, we can't. Solve this. Tonight, um, and, uh. What, I mean, I know that we're, we need to make a decision tonight. Um, I just wish we had a little more clarity on. What the real, you know, options were and where. A, um. A, a pathway, multi-use path, we would be built if we were to connect the one that already exists all the way. Uh, you know, further south on, on Great Road, all the way up to Cherry Valley, but we don't have that. Level of certainty, and, um, I guess I'm just stating the obvious, but it's part of what makes this frustrating. Uh, Mr. O'Donnell?
Thank you. I'm just trying to. Get this straight. In my own head. So we can either. Or our options are, we can grant a waiver. Based on financial hardship, in which case no work, no. David, you're shaking your head.
I, I'm not sure that, I mean, the Mr. Casey read off. The statute, and I think it kind of excluded financial hardship. It, it described what kinds of hardship. Could be relevant, and it did not list financial hardship.
It said, what I heard is the waiver request must be reasonable, it must to apply to, to a specific property, and there needs to be a. Practical and/or a practical hardship, which to me could.
Okay.
Be any number of things. It could be, you know.
We can.
Based on the land, and it could be based on finance, but, but there is no specific financial hardship, um, rationale.
All right.
Adam, clarify.
Is it possible? That we can, and I think I heard this before, we can make a condition for a future buyer. Of the property. That they would have to then either construct. The pathway or. Make a payment in lieu of construction. Is that possible?
Mr. Mueller?
Yes, I think it is.
Okay, that's a simple answer. Uh, Mr. Casey, did you?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I would object to that as well, because ultimately. The finances behind it. Make the lot less marketable then. If you're going to tell someone who's going to buy that, that they're going to have to pay two hundred thousand dollars to install. A sidewalk. It, it's a, it's a deal breaker, um, given the condition of that current lot, right? Do we already have, have we already granted a right of way? Across the front of eleven twenty-eight? To. Princeton? Because. We'd be willing to do that in lieu of. Any. You know. Money oblig- future money obligation by anybody who, who's going to be there. So. You'd have the ability to build a sidewalk there, and, and I. Probably is a simple answer, you might already have the right of way, I just don't know. That would be a, a middle ground perhaps to say, in lieu of. Having us construct a sidewalk that's going to cost a whole lot of money. We would meet you halfway and give you a right of way to allow you to construct a sidewalk at some point.
Uh, Mr. Weissman?
Yeah, the right, the right of way along great load, road in that portion, uh, meets the minimum required, varies between fifty-five and sixty feet. Which is, uh, what's required for a secondary arterial.
But is, with the, with the placement of the cartway within that right of way? Is there room? Within the right of way to build? A shared use path. Alongside the road, I guess is. Cause. If there's not, then we might, even though it meets the standard, we might need more right of way if, if we wanted to build it.
Uh, the roadway and shoulders, uh, total approximately tw- twenty-eight feet. Um, so that would leave, uh. Significant room on either side.
Side, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that already exists. That's not something that the applicant is. Um. Giving up or tonight, right?
Right, right.
Well, um.
Or, or can we cap our obligation now? If it. You know, if, if it's not going to be a waiver or whatever, and if, if we say that whoever does buy this has to. A, a fifty thousand dollar payment in lieu of installation of something. I'm just trying to cap our exposure here.
Uh, understood. Mr. Mueller is a, is a requirement of that kind within our jurisdiction?
I, I, I think so. I mean, you know, the, the real problem is we don't have hard data, but, um. That seems, uh, my reaction to that is that it's reasonable, but, uh, I don't know how the members feel.
Okay. Um, Ms. Sax?
Yeah, I just hope that in the future when staff make recommendations for things, conditions that they think we should impose, that they come with all the requisite. Information that we would need to make that decision and including, you know. Is this the twenty sixteen bike master plan? Is it the most recent master plan? What is the legal framework in which we would impose this? Because, um, you know, this seemed like a relatively simple application, and now we've spent all this time. On, you know, speculating about, uh, you know, trying to make a decision. Based on incomplete and inadequate information. Um, and I also just wanted to reiterate, reiterate what I started with, which is, you know. For those who don't know, and I don't have any children who attended this school. Um, but I know that this was a very special school, and that almost went under, and that there was enormous community effort that. Saved them and, and we're very fortunate to still have them, and I know they're still struggling. And yes, we, you know, had we lost them, um, the alternative would have been. Most likely a big developer who could afford all the things that we want, but, um, I'm glad that we have this school. And it's part of the many amazing schools like this that, um. Contribute to the, the educational texture and quality and character of our town, and I think that we should be supporting them. And not, um, you know. Basically. Slide, going sideways on this entire, uh, uh. Application on a path based on hypotheticals that might occur in the future, and I. Am an avid biker, and I, 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 um, you know, as anyone who knows me, I'm a strong advocate of bike paths. But I also, I just, I think context and balance and in terms of how we make this, these decisions is, is. Crucial and keeping in mind who the applicant is and how we can be supportive. Um.
Yeah.
Believe it at that.
Yeah, I take your point, and I think you've. L- laid out the rationale for exceptional circumstances that make it a reasonable request. So, um. I do want to hear from, we have two board hands up, and then if there are no other comments, I really want to hear from the public. So. Mr. Bodigheimer and then Ms. Capazoli.
Yeah, I'll keep it short. I agree with, uh, Councilwoman Sax.
Thank you. Julie?
I just wanted to say the same thing. I think it's an ideal use of the site. I think. Destroying the. Existing structures and losing a lot of those woods would be. Extremely. Uh, detrimental to the community. So, yeah, as much as we could do to support the existing use, I think is a smart way to go.
All right. Thank you. Thank you both for, for weighing in. Um. Seeing no other board comments right now, I want to. Open up the meeting for public comments. So there are now forty-three members of the public who are, um. Attending. If you wish to, um, address the board, and one person's already being brought over. See Barr. Um, now is the time to raise your, if you, if you want to talk to the board about this application, now is the time to raise your hand. And, uh, we'll bring people over into the participant room in the order in which hands are raised. Um. So I'm not seeing any other hands go up, so I'm, I'm saying again, if you want to speak to this application, raise your hand now, and you'll be brought over in order. Um, C Barr, can you activate your camera, please? And. There you go. Welcome.
Well, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mueller will swear you in, and then you'll. Have your three minutes.
Do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So I just want to affirm, could you please state your full name and spell your last name?
Uh, my name is Christopher Barr, and my last name is spelled B-A-R-R. And I'm the, uh, Director of, uh, Ridgeview Conservancy, which is Mr. Casey. Mentioned earlier, um, we've been in, uh, discussions, uh, with the school for many months now. And, and maybe before I get into, uh, the rest of my statement, I, I would also like to say that we very much agree with. The comments made by Councilwoman Sax. You know, I think like everybody in the community. We were shocked and saddened when we heard, uh, several months ago that the school, uh. Uh, may be closing at the end of the school year, and, um, we could see that the. Uh, if a developer were to come in and buy the property, that it would significantly transform the property and disrupt it, not to mention. You know, an important institution in our community, um, uh, no longer being around. So. Uh, we're very, very pleased, um, that the school, uh, has found a plan, um, to move forward and to remain. Uh, to remain in operation, and, uh. We are extremely enthused and optimistic that the school has, um. Invited us into a, a discussion about partnering on conservation of, uh, of, uh, portions of their property. From our perspective, there's a real opportunity here for a big win-win, and, uh. You know, from a conservation perspective, uh, this is important for several reasons. You know, one is that the Princeton Ridge. Is an environmentally sensitive habitat, and, um. Uh, any development, uh, right now, uh, in the Princeton Ridge will affect that habitat. Uh, the school is located just up slope from, uh, the headwaters of Mountain Brook. And efforts have gone into preserving, uh, those headwaters, so any further impervious surface there could affect that. Um, and also, you know, this is the view shed for the northern gateway to Princeton along the Great Road. And finally, you know, as someone mentioned earlier, the school is a historic property, and it's. There's been, uh, discussion about its eligibility for the New Jersey and National Registers of Historic Property. And so our interest is really to work with the school and with the, uh, community. To, uh, help the school, um. Obtain the funds that it needs to, uh, continue operating and to keep its property intact. So that we're, you know, they're able to pass it off, you know, pass it on to future generations. Um, the school is also located on Princeton's Emerald Necklace. And, uh, it's an, an important linkage, uh, property between, uh, the, uh. Hundred fifty-three acre Province Line Woods, which, you know, significant. Uh, bandwidth and resources, uh, were mobilized to conserve that in recent years, as well as the Ridgeview Woods, uh, which is just to the east. Um, and, uh, and, uh, points beyond. So, thank you very much for, uh, considering the school's application, and. As I said, we're very enthused and optimistic to be partnering with the school, and we hope we can, uh, reach an agreement there.
Thank you, Mr. Barr.
Thank you.
Um, so I'm not seeing any other hands, uh, raised to comment on this application, so I'll close the. Uh, public. Um. Comment portion. Of the meeting for now, and, um. Interested in any, any final thoughts from board members, um. Including perhaps a, um, a motion, uh, with suggested, um. Conditions. Mr. Mueller?
Yeah, I, I wonder, Derek, can you just again advise the board on the, the question of the dugout and part of the baseball field? And what's been proposed by, what was proposed by Mr. Casey and your reaction to that?
I'm not sure what Mr. Casey's proposal was.
Well, he was talking about getting some, if, if the lot is sold, um. I guess even if it's not sold, uh, it would be subdivided and would be subject to the R, A or B standards.
Well, I think as long as it's under common ownership, the, the, the baseball field can exist under the conditional use authorization that already exists. For this, this, the school.
Yeah.
If it is sold, I think they would need to lease it, and they need to come back and get conditional use authorization for it. Um, you know, our concern is. With subdivisions, you want to kind of clean up. You know, the, the issues before it's, uh, it's subdivided. Um, so that's, that was our intent without. Bringing that condition to the, uh, the board's attention, but.
Okay. So Mr. Casey, I'm sorry, go ahead, Derek.
No, I, I just was going to say I would be interested to see what, uh, Mr. Casey has to, has to offer on that.
Yeah, cause at one point earlier, and Bob jumped in.
Yeah.
He had suggested maybe some kind of easement and maybe. Four, five, he was, but go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, I talked to Derek about it yesterday, actually, and, and given the, the current zoning, um. He's right. I, I, I think technically he's right, that we would have to, if we wanted to use. That portion or ha- enter into an agreement with a new owner of that property and title changed hands. We remarkably would have to come back. The zoning board and get a, a use variance for. Uh, that portion of the property that would be a dugout. Um. I mean, it's, it's cumbersome to think of, but I think that, uh, that the technical reading of it by Derek is correct.
But Derek, you weren't suggesting they come back to the zoning board, they can come back to us, correct? Get conditional use.
I mean, you could have a conditional use, they'd have to have some ownership of the land in the form of a lease or something like that. Um, I mean. Then it would be part of their property under their control, but, uh.
Yeah.
We don't want to take the baseball away from the kids, but it's just like, it's a hanging item out there and, uh.
Yeah, you know.
Address it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lesko?
Uh, yes, I have a similar kind of clarification question about the, uh, driveway moving on to Drake's Corner Road.
Uh, it's been presented on the application, uh, on the site plan that the road will be moved. Uh, what I heard tonight is maybe, maybe not, um, depending on if it goes to, uh, i- if it's preserved by an outside group. So I just want to make sure that the board, before we get into conditions or the applicant, uh, we square away that there could be a condition that, uh, I'd imagine the board doesn't want to see that change if it doesn't have to. And thus the trees wouldn't be taken down, um, but at the same time, you know, just that's clear versus what's shown on the plan right now of it's being moved if it's not, uh, being developed.
Right. I thought where we landed on that is that if the driveway is relocated, um, they'll need to come, they'll need to get um, a review by the arborist or, and by the landscape subcommittee. Um, and our understanding is that if the land is preserved, the driveway will not be relocated.
And perhaps a note could just be added to the drawing indicating that.
That's.
As part of the compliance plan, I guess there's a compliance plan for the subdivision as well as for a site plan. Or I, I mean, it's a minor site plan, so they need the compliance plan anyway. So maybe they can just make that note that the road will only be relocated if the, um, lot is sold for purposes of development.
I like that.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Uh, Jerry, you're gonna have to fill in the, fill in the blanks there.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it would be for, um, final major site plan, a subdivision approval, and I guess minus site plan approval also. Justin, minus site plan approval also?
Yes.
Yes, it's, yes.
Okay, with, um, with waivers and conditions, and let me go through them. Before we do though, I just wanted to ask about the relocation of the utilities. If a deal is worked out with Ridgeview Conservancy and the road is not relocated, will the utilities stay where they are? Yes, okay. Um, so the waivers, uh, there'll be waivers from, um, road dedication on Drake's Corner. Reconstruction of existing roads abutting the property, that would be both Drake's Corner and, um, uh, Great Road and sidewalk and bike paths on, on the Great Road. Either construct or payment in little waivers from all of that. Uh, then there's one we just talked about, Pash should be in, is in negotiations with Ridgeview Conservancy. And if that is, reaches fruition, the road will stay where it, they are, it is, and the utilities as well. Just bear with me. If the, um, driveway is relocated, it'd be subject to review by the arborist and landscape committee, as Ms. Wilson just referred to a few min- uh, minutes ago. If the baseball field lot is sold, what lot is that?
Three point oh one.
Right.
Uh, and Pash wants to continue keeping the, the part of the baseball field and the dugout, which is in that lot, they'll have to lease from, um, the owner of three point oh one and secure a, um, conditional use authorization from the planning board.
They're moved.
Um, I s-
I was gonna go.
Uh, let me get a second before, before I, thank you, Nat. Mr. Lesko?
Uh, just, uh, quick question, uh, should it be conditioned on Ridgeview Conservancy or open space preservation? If that were to fall through and another group could do it, I, I wouldn't want the board to have to come back or the applicant to come back for the same result.
That's, that's a good thought.
Yes.
Yes, please. Thanks, Justin.
Mr. Weissman?
I'm not understand.
Oh, he, he's saying that the preservation, the language about land preservation should not be specific to Ridgeview Conservancy, but rather to preservation by a.
Isn't this condition related to the? Related to the baseball field? Isn't that what we're talking about?
Uh, I was going back a little earlier.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it's a, it's a driveway will stay where it is. And I had talked about if the negotiations with, um, Ridgeview Conservancy reach fruition. And Justin appropriately said, or if it's another open space organization as well. Yeah, I mean, my feeling is the, I, I had proposed some language for that, Jerry. Uh, the road only will be relocated in the event the lot is sold for purposes of development.
Oh, okay.
So whether it's preserved or they retain ownership or whatever, the road will not be moved.
Okay.
Uh, unless three point oh two is sold for the purposes of development.
Yes.
That's good, David.
Yeah, that's good. Mr. Weissman?
Uh, I just wanted to clarify the, uh, Mr. Muller, the, the waiver for the dedication of right of way. I felt the applicant had indicated that they are, uh, amenable to dedicating the right of way along Drake's Corner Road.
Oh, okay.
So waiver.
No waiver. No way for you.
Yeah, I, I guess I had thought there was no waiver needed for that, but.
That, that's fine.
But was certainly no need to grant a waiver for that.
And that'd be conditioned then?
Yes.
It, it'll make the dedication. Then I wanted to go, and I know we have still another item to cover and it's starting to get like, um, let me just, if I may, just go through the, um, the reports. Then there's minor checklist item waivers. Um, okay, the applicant shall provide a true replacement plan, uh, that'd be a condition. Um, but that's subject to review of the arborist and the, uh, landscape architect.
Landscape Subcommittee.
I'm sorry, Landscape Subcommittee.
Again, that's only if there is development, though, on that lot.
Correct, only if the driveway is relocated, which would only happen if the lot is developed. Yeah.
Right. Um, and then I'm now on section four point oh of, uh, uh, Dan and Derek's, uh, memo. Applicant shall provide a valid NJDEP freshwater wetlands peremptive interpretation for the entire tract, prior to proceeding with any develop- development. Bob, do you have any reaction to that? It seems, uh, something the board certainly is authorized to and I think should, uh, just ju- jump in if, if you have any issues. The applicant shall provide a steep slope analysis of proposed lot three point oh one to determine if any slopes were in excess of the minimum twenty-five percent slope for single family residential development.
And that would be for people who are going to develop the property?
Yes.
Future development, I would say.
Well, I think this was a request that the steep slope analysis be done as part of the compliance plan. I mean, it's not hard to do. You already have the topographic information, don't you? Mr. Rupnari, Rupnareen?
Yes, we do have topography on the property, uh, throughout the entire lot, so.
Didn't I even see some steep slope analysis in some portions already?
We have shown the slopes over fifteen percent, but it wasn't broken out to fifteen to twenty-five and twenty-five and above.
Okay. And then we'll put in a force that it's, uh, site development classified as minor development. And then there's the standard stuff about pens, um, the property corners, the na- the new designation of the lots. Subdivision platched, we provided engineering department in digital form deed documents approved by me before filing with the Mercer County Clerk. Applicant shall comply with comments of the municipality's land surveying consultant review letter. Was there such a letter? I didn't see it.
Which letter do you mean? I'm sorry, I didn't follow you.
The applicant shall comply with the comments of the municipality's land surveying consultant review letter. I didn't see such a letter.
Yeah, I've got it. Mr. Sandusky prepared it.
Oh, and you have, Bob?
I do indeed. I think Eric probably has.
He has it and he agrees.
Yes.
And if you can get that, a copy of that to me, that'd be great.
Sure.
Construction court estimates following approvals may be necessary. Mercer County Planning Board and Mercer County Soil Conservation District, Delaware and River and Canal Commission, and that's it.
Can we, can we do just one, a certain, one item? I'm sorry, um.
Sure.
In the event the, the same sort of, uh, deal that we have with lot three point oh two on Drake's Corner relative to three point oh one on Great Road, in the event that property is sold to someone who agrees not to develop it, can we agree that we don't have to come back and get a conditional use permission to keep our dugout and baseball field where it is?
And that's on three point oh two?
That would be on lot three point oh one.
Oh.
On Great Road where the baseball field is.
What would you need a conditional use authorization for three point oh two for?
No, I'm saying, so just like Mr. Cohen had said, um, we want, we're not going to move the driveway if someone who buys it is someone like the Ridge Conservancy or going to preserve it. I would just ask that that same condition be imposed on proposed lot three point oh one that because it, it would maybe change title to someone like Green Acres or whoever it might be, to someone who agrees to deed restrict it and not develop it, but is okay with us having our baseball field that remain there. I just don't, I'm just trying to save us from coming back for something.
Oh, I've seen.
On our baseball field.
And that's.
That makes sense?
Yeah, that's three point oh one?
That's three point oh one.
Yeah. Okay, um.
So any, anybody who purchases that is gonna require, you know, I, I, I don't know what, but you're not, but you're gonna have to enter into some kind of agreement if you continue to use open space, you know, part.
Oh, sure.
Part of an open space lot for a baseball field.
Yeah.
And I mean, this.
There would be a lease, there would be, there would be insurance, all those types of things for sure. But there would be no development, no building on that lot is the, is what differentiates it. So that what Derek was saying that if we sell it to Joe Smith and he has a deed in Joe Smith and we wanted to do that, we would have to come back and get a conditional use approval for that. What I'm proposing is if it stays with the Ridgeview or Green Acres or whoever it is, or someone who agrees to deed restrict it from development and allows us, right, to you, keep our baseball field where it is. And that would be a third party transaction like between us in terms of a lease or something, but do we still have to come back? It's just expensive to do that.
Can you ju- jump in on that, um?
Well, I mean, yeah, I'm glad to, Jerry. Thank you. Um, I mean, the conditional use was, authorization was granted to Sacred Heart. So once you sell it, I think it goes away, unfortunately.
I agree. But that's why I'm asking for, it just, well, I mean, just saves us a trip is all. If nothing's, the status quo, it's status quo, it just happens to be in the name of a non- another nonprofit for non-development. We would have to expend the resources to come back and get a conditional use variance.
That trigger a return to the board, though, Mr. Bridger?
I, I think it does. I mean, the, the additional use was granted to Pash. Unfortunately, if Mr. Smith buys it and wants to keep it as, as it is now, I think he would have to come in, you'd have to lease it. And I, I mean, I, unless Jerry has a, a secret rabbit he can pull out of the hat, I don't see any other way, but.
Yeah, I, I have to, I think Derek is right on this one, um. I, I, I think it's unavoidable because at that point it's just, um, a, a use which is not permitted, uh, in the, uh, in the zone. And, um, they haven't, Pash hasn't gotten any authorization to, uh, to permit it. That's the whole conditional use idea.
And it would be. That's not something we can, we can, um,
Right, it's not.
Grant, Mr. Casey.
Yeah, and it's not a variance, Bob. It's just conditional use authorization.
But we'll make it as painless as possible.
Yeah.
Much easier than this, much easier than this hearing.
So we, we have a motion and a second, and Jerry has laid out all of the conditions. Um, are we ready to vote? I think we are.
And the waivers.
I'm sorry.
Mister, uh,
I did.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bodikheimer did.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Bodikheimer?
Yes.
Ms. Capazoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Nuka?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried, all in favor.
Okay.
Very much.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Thank you, Mr. Barr. Thank you, Mr. Rupnareen. Uh, we have another application before us tonight. I'm gonna propose that we take a break now instead of, uh, waiting thirty minutes and then taking a break. Uh, so it's eight fifty-one. Let's reconvene, uh, at nine or nine oh one, okay? Ten minutes.
Thank you.
Um, thanks, everybody. See you soon. Put the video, please. Uh, next up, we have an application from Estate Shore LLC. This is a minor subdivision with variances at four seventy-nine Jefferson Road, block fifty-four oh eight, lot one. And this is file number P twenty-three twenty-three dash four oh three M S. Um, we have right now thirty-seven attendees, um, uh, in the attendees room and, um, just FYI. Um, Mr. Lesko, do you want to open things up here?
Uh, certainly, and first I'd ask Jerry, uh.
Raise your right hand.
Well, but about the notice and jurisdiction.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Can you speak to notice and proper, proper notice and jurisdiction, please, Jerry?
Yes, notice is proper and, and service is proper and the board has jurisdiction.
Thank you, Justin, for keeping me between the ditches.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So that's one or front. Um, it, I guess, um, Dan and Derek here as well?
Yeah, that's a good idea. Dan and Derek? You guys here? You, uh, get sworn in now? Yeah.
Do you swear or, or affirm the testimony about to give be the truth?
I do.
I do.
So it's one or front.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and I would like to start by sharing my screen again. And I believe you can see that now. Um, so once again, I'd like to, uh, utilize the NJ parcel explorer publicly available from Rowan University, uh, to orient everyone to the site. Uh, the subject parcel is four seventy-nine Jefferson on the corner of Kyler Road and Jefferson Road. It is currently a point four six acre lot in the R six zone of the former township. And before I keep going, Jerry, is this exhibit PB one?
Yep, PB one.
Okay, great. Um, uh, so like I said, it's currently a point four six acre lot in the R six zone of the former township. Uh, on it is a twelve hundred square foot, one-story residential dwelling built in nineteen fifty-five, uh, with a driveway access off Kyler. Uh, there are also sidewalks existing on Jefferson, but not on Kyler. And the parcel is not within any designated local, state, or national historic districts. Uh, the applicant proposes to subdivide the lot into two point two three acre lots, uh, with the suggestion to construct a single-family detached home on each lot. And the homes, uh, that were proposed are shown to front on Kyler. Uh, the applicant is requesting variances for minimum lot size where point two five acres is required. Uh, again, that's compared to the proposed point two three acres on each. Uh, and additionally, the applicant is requesting a variance from the prevailing front yard setback requirement on Jefferson Road of forty-seven feet. Uh, the proposed corner lot, uh, would, uh, is considered to have two front yard setbacks. So one on Jefferson and one on Kyler with the related, uh, prevailing front yard setbacks, uh, on each, uh, on each street. So again, I'll hold my comments until after the applicant's presentation. And, uh, as you all know, uh, Derek and Dan are here, uh, they also have the, their memo.
Uh, they also have the, their memo with a variety of comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Um, uh, so Derek and Dan, is there anything that you want to bring to our attention before we hear from the applicant? Anything of particular note?
Uh, not at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Ryan Kennedy from Stevens and Lee, just down Princeton Pike. Um, thank you all, um, members of the board and staff and members of the public for hearing us tonight. Um, as uh, your planning director indicated, this is a minor subdivision request for the property at four seventy-nine Jefferson. Um, you know, essentially it does split it in half into two lots that are that we hope you'll see from the exhibits and testimony we have are um, conforming in every way except for lot area and, and very closely conforming in lot area and similar to uh, and larger than, um, and more conforming than many of the lots uh, on our side of the street, um, as, as we'll show you. Um. One thing from the outset, uh, we, when we got the uh, uh, staff memos uh, last week, um, you know, we, we did see and hear the concern about the prevailing setback along uh, Jefferson. Uh, honestly, we think that's a, was a very good comment and concern and will show you um, um, as an exhibit. Uh, but essentially stipulate to you that we're prepared to, and there is plenty of room uh, to respect that setback and, and not seek that variance. So the, I'll tell you at the, um, you know, at the outset uh, that the applicant will, will not need uh, and while we noticed for it. Uh, again, when we got the uh, staff reports, we essentially agreed with them and took another look at that and you know, in preparing for this, um, are prepared to uh, move forward uh, without um, setback variance uh, relief along, um, along Jefferson. Um, we'll have uh, likely two witnesses tonight. We've got someone who it's been minutes since you've heard from, but uh, our engineer, um, uh, Eric is still on from the prior uh, hearing. Um, and then our planning expert, uh, Susan, I believe is on as well. Um, so uh, uh, with that, perhaps we could um, swear them both in, um, maybe for the second time tonight or for the first uh, in, in our planner's case.
Sure. Do you raise your right hand?
Sorry.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
Yes, I do.
Yes, yes, I do.
So that's one of them. Please say your full name and spell your last name.
Eric Rup Narain, R U P N A R A I N.
Good, thank you.
And I am Barbara Allen. My last name is E as in Edward, H L E N.
Thank you.
Thank you both and Bart, with apologies, I'm not sure I got Susan from. It's one of those uh, when you start at nine o'clock, hopefully that's the only mistake I make tonight. Um, uh, so uh, with that, as we normally do, we have a, a set of, I believe, eleven slides. If it's uh, um, well, actually before that, um, while I believe he may have recently been accepted as an expert, um, Madam Chair, if you'd like us to repeat that process, um, uh, Eric wanted with, with your credentials, I, I know they were very recently accepted.
Yeah, but he, he has, you have to go through that drill again, as you know.
All right. Eric, if you could.
Certainly. Um, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the states of New Jersey and Pennsylvania. I've been licensed in New Jersey since two thousand and three. I received a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Villanova University in nineteen ninety-seven and in two thousand and one, I received a master's from the same. Uh, since graduating in ninety-seven, I've been practicing uh, land development for both, um, uh, residential developments and commercial developments for both uh, the land developers and private homeowners. I've testified in front of this board and in front of numerous other boards uh, throughout New Jersey.
Thank you, Mr. Rup Narain. We accept your qualifications. Um, can we qualify um, your planner too?
Absolutely. Uh, Barbara, if you would like to um, go through your credentials, um, and.
I would love to. Um, my name is Barbara Allen. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey and an AICP. I've worked with Beacon Planning since two thousand and eight and I've been licensed since two thousand and fifteen. I've worked my way up to principal. I've been accepted throughout New Jersey uh, before boards such as um, Oceanport, Long Branch, Red Bank, Carteret. Um, currently we're serving as the board planners for the Borough Freehold and I've been accepted as a expert in land use planning by the New Jersey Superior Court.
We accept your qualifications. Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, uh, if we could, I, I'd like to share my screen. We'll have one exhibit um, uh, to have marked, I believe it is eleven uh, slides to show here this evening. You know, for those of you looking at the clock, one of them is the introduction and one of them does say thank you. So hopefully we can be efficient. Um, uh, Eric, um, if we could, looking at slide two, I want to start to orient the, the board um, and where we are, you know, what the blue arrow is looking at, what the zoning for this part of town is.
Certainly. Uh, so the blue arrow is pointing towards where the property is located, the property that's a subject of tonight's application. And the property is located at the intersection of Jefferson and Kyler Road. And uh, what's formerly the township section of the, of Princeton. And the property is located at that corner, which would be the north easterly corner of the area.
So uh, moving on to slide three, this is kind of a, a neighborhood area map. Anything you want to describe about the prevailing patterns here?
Certainly. Um, so the property currently contains an existing house and a driveway. The driveway presently provides access to Collier Road. There is no driveway access currently to Jefferson's, to Jefferson Road from this particular property. The house is located at approximately, I would say, the middle of the site. And the middle towards I, what would be the westerly half of the property towards Jefferson Road. Um, the driveway itself is located on the easterly side of the property, um, on that other half of the site.
Thanks. Moving on, uh, this, a slide four, I guess is oriented slightly differently, uh, with I think Jefferson going left to right on the top and, and um, I'm going to point out some of the, those features on, on this, um, this slide.
Excuse me for interrupting, but we, did we identify this set of slides as exhibit A one?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, all right. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
So on this particular slide, the boundary of the property is highlighted in blue. And what the, the board can see in the middle of that, the property boundary is the existing dwelling that's on site. Towards the left of that blue line along Kyler Road, which is towards the left of the property on the left side. Um, there are right now the driveway, there's a couple of cars that the board might be able to see that's parked in the driveway. And that's the only parking presently on this property. It does not contain any detached garage or any attached garage to the dwelling.
Uh, next slide here, these are renderings of the, the two homes that are proposed uh, to be built. Is that correct?
Correct. The applicant is proposing two, two-story dwellings, one will, one in each lot.
Yeah, Eric, if you could name which slide it is by number as you go through them.
Certainly. So this is slide number five. And it showed two, the two dwellings that the applicant is uh, looking to construct. Uh, the dwelling that's shown on the left slide, that would be the dwelling that we anticipate building on the, what would be the new corner lot. The dwelling to the right is the one that we anticipate building, um, on the easterly lot, which is the lot that will front on Kyler Road only.
And, and these reviews essentially would be, if you're looking at the, at the two homes from Kyler, um, kind of between the two, this is what it might look like, uh, uh, if the world was rendered by Photoshop.
Correct.
All right. Um, next on slide six, uh, this is the uh, bulk table here, um, uh, uh, borrowed from a combination of your plans, I believe, and, and the uh, reports uh, from the municipal municipalities, um, staff and experts. You want to take us through both the, the variance condition that we are asking about, and then we can talk a little bit about the, the, the setbacks.
Certainly. Um, so the project is located in the R six zone. And within the R six zone, the minimum lot area that's required is a quarter acre or approximately ten thousand eight hundred and ninety square feet. The existing lot is roughly a hundred feet in depth, um, if measured perpendicular to Kyler, and it's approximately two hundred feet wide, um, along the frontage of Kyler. The applicant's proposal to subdivide the lot into two newly created lots will provide ten thousand square feet for each lot, which would be slightly less than what's required by the ordinance. Ten thousand square feet is approxim- approximately point two three acres. And the ordinance requires point two five acres. So the applicant is seeking variances for both new lots that are being created for the minimum lot area that's required. Outside of the minimum lot area variance, the applicant anticipates complying with all of the other zoning criteria, all of the other bulk zoning criteria that's required for the R six zone. Um, this particular exhibit shows, and this is slide number six. It shows that the applicant was seeking a variance for the mean prevailing front setback along Jefferson Road. Earlier today, we reviewed the project with the applicant and what we're proposing to do is the dwelling that's located on the corner lot, that dwelling will be shifted to the right in order to eliminate the need for that variance. So the applicant anticipate complying with the mean prevailing front setback on Jefferson Road, thereby eliminating that variance.
Two other.
Go, will, will the building, will that house be oriented uh, toward Jefferson?
No, the house will maintain the same orientation that we have. Both the house would essentially the fronts of the homes will be on Kyler.
All right, before we leave this slide, uh, two other items. Um, I think you have uh, listed here twenty-seven percent. That would be the proportional floor area available to, to lots of these size, uh, and other similar lots in the neighborhood, but uh, essentially the, the, the homes that are proposed were only twenty-five hundred square feet or, or twenty-five percent floor area. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. And also, um, uh, the impervious coverage shown on the plans that you had designed, this is uh, each lot would be at thirty point five percent, um, with the, the orientation that is proposed?
Correct.
Uh, next slide, and we'll probably come back to this one with our planner, but um, this is, you know, uh, uh, I believe a the slide seven is the tax map of our side of the street. Um, and can you walk us through here from left to right, what we're looking at and, you know, the, kind of explain the conditions here of the, the lots on, on this street, um, particularly in terms of the eighty-five foot width requirement and the quarter acre lot area requirement, how we compare more or less?
Certainly. So again, the blue arrow that's located on this slide to the, the left of the screen, that ident- identifies the lot that's in question that's proposed for subdivision. Um, this slide or this exhibit shows approximately where the new lot line will be created and essentially the arrow is pointing right down to where the lot line will be created. Our proposed lots will be a hundred feet by a hundred feet, which is ten thousand square feet. If we were to move to the left or towards the, excuse me, towards the right or towards the east along Kyler, these are all of the existing lots that fronts on Kyler. And these lots, most of which varies in sizes, but the lot directly adjacent to us, that's point thirty-two acres. All of the other remaining lots are generally around point two, two, point two, three acres in square footage. Those lots are slightly narrower than what we're proposing, but they're also deeper in depth. Um, the lots along Kyler, currently they vary in width from seventy-five feet to eighty-seven feet to seventy-five feet. However, the acreage of those lots are all roughly approximately point two, three. Uh, there are some lots that are a little larger, but the vast majority of the lots are in that point two, two, point two, three range.
And the, the red shaded lots are again on all our street, all of them have some uh, non-conforming condition, whether it be uh, width, width and or lot area. Is that correct?
Correct.
Um, next, we'll move to slide eight. Um, uh, this is a, a clip from your subdivision plan. If you, I'm going to ask if you could possibly do two things at once here. One, you know, talk about the features and, and, and design of, you know, what is being proposed? And then, um, if you could also talk about uh, the discussion that was had that, you know, how we can slide things over essentially and, and avoid um, quite easily the request for a setback.
Certainly. Um, so this particular slide shows the two dwellings, the garages, and how we anticipate configuring the driveway. The areas that are highlighted in gray, that's what was submitted as part of the original documentation that's in front of the board. Um, the easterly most lot, that lot is fully conforming. We don't anticipate any changes regarding that property. Where the house has been placed, it complies with the prevailing front setback along Kyler. And similarly, the proposed detached garage, that also complies with the bulk requirements for the garage. The driveway on that particular property is about fifteen and a half feet from the easterly property line. And again, the ordinance requires a minimum of five, so we are compliant with respect to all of the bulk zoning criteria for that lot. The corner lot, which is the one that has essentially the gray and the blues, the gray is what was originally proposed and submitted. And as the board can see, uh, the gr- for the house on this particular property, the house was located within the front prevailing setback. What we discussed earlier today with the applicant is if there was a way for us to essentially eliminate the need for that variance. And what's shown is appro- in the blue is approximately what we anticipate doing in order to eliminate the variance. The house and the driveway both will be shifted to the east towards the right on the screen. The driveway will be approximately five feet from the property line. Again, that'll comply with the zoning ordinance. And similarly, the detached garage to the rear, that will also be moved in an easterly direction towards the right so that the garage is about five feet off of the property line, again, compliant with the ordinance. What that does, it allows us to take the proposed dwelling and then also shift that further to the right or to the east. By moving the dwelling, the applicant is able to comply with the mean prevailing front setback along Jefferson Road, and that's how we anticipate eliminating the need for that variance request.
Um, and Eric, if we were not to get the variance as, you know, essentially since we are stipulating not to, um, but shifting the house over, um, didn't fully work, um, would the applicant have no other choice but to essentially redesign or build something slightly different? Um, that did comply. Is that correct? Without that variance relief, there would be no ability to build in the front yard setback?
Correct.
Um, there, uh, does the impact, does shifting of that driveway uh, impact uh, your, your understanding of um, the ability of these sites to support stormwater mitigation or uh, increase the impervious coverage, um, that, uh, that they would otherwise have?
No. Um, if anything, the impervious coverage based on the current layout that we have is going to be slightly, slightly reduced on the corner lot directly as a result of a slightly shorter walkway from the driveway to the front door. Other than that, I believe we could comply fully with all of the other ordinance criteria.
Uh, thank you, Eric. Um, uh, that will be our testimony from our, our civil engineer. Um, Madam Chair, I'm happy to, to pause uh, for, for questions you might have for him.
Uh, thank you. We have a question for Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, I'm wondering if you can, um, tell us what the increase in impervious coverage is from the existing to the proposed, because I noticed in your table, you know, you didn't have an existing impervious, you just, um, well, I'll leave it at that. So I'm, I'm curious, you know, whether you fall into the category of a large development for relative to our stormwater ordinance or a, a small and how close you are to falling into the large category.
Certainly. Um, Mr. Cohen, if you could bear with me for a moment, I just want to flip through the plan sheets. Um, because sheet number two in the set that's in front of the board, that documents the existing site conditions with the total impervious coverage, which is twenty-two hundred and thirty-eight square feet. And that's for the existing dwelling, the shed, the driveway and the walkway that's located on the property. The proposed impervious coverage that we have thirty, forty-seven. The total proposed impervious coverage for the driveways, the walkways, both the dwellings and the garages will be six thousand and ninety-four square feet. Um, which is approximately thirty-eight hundred and fifty-six square feet increase in impervious coverage. Under your ordinance, anything over five thousand square feet is considered a major development. So this project will still be classified as a minor for stormwater purposes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, could you speak or, or if, if this is a more appropriate for a different witness, I'm happy to wait, but I'm interested in, I understand the, both of these homes are intended to uh, face Kyler. Um, I think it's. I think it's important that the the facade that faces Jefferson also speak to Jefferson, if you will, you know, maybe even have a pathway from the house to Jefferson in case people are coming from that direction on foot. Can you just talk a little bit about that facade and how it will relate to Jefferson? I mean, when there was a testimony about basically two front yards, maybe I'm paraphrasing improperly, but two front yard setbacks. And I'm just sort of thinking about the two front yard orientation.
Good, good question. I'll 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 start and and feel the few to to Eric. On one hand, I mean, ultimately, it is a home that's designed orienting in one direction. The township's rules do have two front yards. If you, I think if you were to look up and down the the street. It might be hard to tell here, but 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 some of these other lots that are on the corner, they they don't necessarily address both. But a good point, and and Eric, one, maybe we could, if you have a quick way of of not me saying calculating, but you know, what the impact of if there were to be a another second kind of walkway, you know, towards Jefferson, what that would be, you know, roughly in terms of impervious coverage. And and I'm sure the the applicant would be willing to to, you know, consider maybe aesthetic changes to to orient differently aesthetically the front of the home. Maybe not to fully make it appear that that would be where one would enter or approach. You know, there's some sensitivity about front door appearance and allocation, certainly, that, you know, you should, while there are two front yards for setback purposes, really should only front to one one street, but the appearance of that to make sure it's appropriate for a a street like Jefferson with that type of setback is certainly something we would consider. We may have a plan to to show up from the from a side profile. But, you know, I I think to to Chairwoman's, to your question, it is, you know, designed as a side of a home, not as a a second front.
Right. I just think you, you know, and this, I guess, would would require architectural testimony, and you don't have architectural testimony, and I don't know the right vernacular. But I think that it is, you know, important at the end of the day that there be you know, some attention to how the house relates to Jefferson. Thank you, David, for raising your hand. And then Mia.
Yeah, I mean, I I just want to support your point, Louise, and perhaps even a little more strongly. The current house does front on Jefferson. Even though the driveway comes in off of Kyler. And the pattern along Jefferson is that virtually every lot that faces Jefferson, the residents fronts on Jefferson. I mean, it's a very strong pattern because Jefferson is the dominant road and the other roads are side roads. And so yeah, I think I think perhaps the house should do more than appear to front on Jefferson. But should perhaps be redesigned to actually front on Jefferson.
With the driveway presumably off of Kyler.
Yeah. Well, I mean, in in our neighborhood, character ordinance is very supportive on corner lots. You know, of driveways coming from one side while the the building faces another. I think it's actually preferred.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Sax?
Yeah, I was gonna say exactly that. I I I think it should front on Jefferson. And I would like to hear the applicant explain if it, why they they wouldn't have gone with that to begin with. I think that would be a strongly preferable configuration, given the importance of Jefferson Road and and everything that David described.
Sure. Eric, if you want to speak a few words on it, the 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 scale of the setbacks as to the two streets do essentially compacted design that would be, you know, from this view, left to right, Jefferson and back, the building envelope is smaller in that direction. That doesn't necessarily mean impossible or different, but that was the reason why it went this way. Eric, is that fair to say why why that particular top to bottom building envelope was preferred?
Right, because the prevailing front setback from Jefferson is forty seven feet. And the prevailing front setback from Kyler is thirty two and a half feet. And given the lots are essentially square lots, a hundred by a hundred, the building envelope, if the house fronts on Kyler, the depth is, it's a deeper envelope that allows the applicant to build within as compared to Jefferson, which provides us with a shallower envelope.
And just so I understand, Councilman Sax, the I I I think I'm hearing a preference for the the home itself to front. But under neighborhood character, maybe not a preference, but either an acceptance or even a preference that the driveway orientation remain almost as we've shown. Do I have that right from from Mr. Cohen?
Yeah.
Strong preference for fronting and yes, it's exactly as you described, yes.
Yeah, thank you. That is, that is excellent or very helpful feedback.
And I understand the point that you were that you were making, Mr. Rupnerain, but I, you know, maybe you could address that by, you know, changing the configuration of the driveway somewhat. Shifting it and making it a shared driveway with the dwelling next door. You know, would shift it back some or to the to the east. I I don't know. I just, any number of ways that you can work with the site and orient the house toward Jefferson. Mr. Cohen?
I I just also wanted to ask a question of Derek. I see that while the house is shown as being moved behind the prevailing front yard setback on Jefferson, the deck continues to project past that setback. And I'm not clear, I know that we have some provision for porches to be able to project past the front setback. But I I'm not clear that that's permitted for decks. So if Derek could address that.
Thank you, David. It only permits it with regard to entrances of four foot setback, a four foot encroachment into a setback. So I think it would not apply here.
Okay.
And and to Mr. Cohen's point, much appreciated. This was in 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 hurried fashion meant to just show that we believe and, you know, absent variance relief, would be complying, not meant to show that we would extend a deck, you know, into that front yard there. But I I did wait for Mr. Bridger's answer in case he had a different opinion. I didn't expect he would, but I thought I'd hear the answer first and I would have answered differently.
All right. Uh, Mr. Lesko.
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And on that note, I did want to advise the board that this is just a subdivision application. And each parcel is for a single family home. So while I certainly don't doubt the word of our of the applicant or the attorneys, it's not binding in the same way that a site plan application is binding. That being said, conditions can be put on an application, so.
Exactly. Yeah, thank you. David?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment in relation to that point. Before you got here, Justin, I mean, we have had noncompliance subdivisions like this where we have required the floor plans to be provided as part of the signing testimony essentially that's needed to decide whether to grant the variance or not. So I know it's not usually required for a simple subdivision, but I think we're within our rights to ask that floor plans that satisfy the board in terms of weighing the criteria for the variance should be a part of the application.
Certainly, and I was referring a little more to the rendering as well.
Right.
So just, so I understand what what Mr. Cohen was saying, that the the request would be if if these redesign were to be acceptable, that you would be looking for revised prior to prior to approval, you you would not be comfortable with approving based on a condition that we satisfy these things. But you would want to see a redesigned home prior to approval.
I think because the changes we're talking about are significant enough that that would be my preference. Again, like to hear from other members of the board, but.
Thoughts from other members, Julie Capizoli?
Yes, I strongly agree that the frontage on Jefferson is significant. Also, there, I don't know if we're going to get to public comment, but a number of people have been waiting for a while, so just saying.
Yes, very good point, and we certainly are going to get to public comment. We might not get all the way through public comment, depending on how many people raise their hands. But it's important to hear from as many people as we can tonight. Ms. Nuka?
Um, I just wanted to say that I also agree with Ms. Capizoli and Mr. Cohen on this point regarding that frontage on Jefferson.
Yep. Good. As do I. Okay, not sit, Mr. Muller?
Just so I understand that is is the point that the house should run Jefferson?
Should front on Jefferson.
And face Jefferson.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, the 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 driveway can come off of Kyler, but the house should front on and face Jefferson. Consistent with everything else on the street.
Yeah, and and with apologies, I know this is this is all very useful information that will lead to a a both a better product and ultimately I I'm I'm hoping an approval at at some point, but I just would be absolutely clear what to what, just picture I, what I'm hearing. One, not to expect setback relief that we had already indicated we're abandoning. Two, orient the home to face Jefferson with a front facade on Jefferson. And then three, a preference, but but not necessarily a requirement at this point, based on these discussions we're having of a driveway oriented, as you've seen it, onto the secondary road. I just wanted to, I what I don't want to happen is just to, if we have to go and redesign a home, and as it turns out, there's some layout reason that causes it to actually make sense for like the other homes on Jefferson to have a driveway that faces Jefferson, that that we're not necessarily committing to abandon that at this point. It's a strong preference and acknowledgement that that's how neighborhood character would look to a corner lot. But but perhaps where I was not hearing flexibility on those first two points, the driveway location may be the 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 point where I'm seeing some perhaps flexibility from the board and how that is solved. Is that a fair summary of of the the comments we've received so far?
Yeah, I don't I don't think that anybody has weighed in heavily on the location of the driveway. Mr. Cohen has pointed out what the neighborhood character ordinance indicates is preferred. I I'm agnostic. I mean, not completely agnostic, that's not, I I would like to see the
Understood.
The the character ordinance, you know, adhered to. And and I think that you can make it work, but.
Understood. No, that that's very helpful, though I I do believe, I don't think this this configuration was identified as a variance condition. But I I'm I'm familiar with the monopoly home piece on the page that you were referring to and and certainly understand we can explore that.
Mr. Cohen, thanks, Mr. Kennedy.
Yeah, I I had another unrelated question. I think it's for for the engineer. There's been some, I guess, buzz in the community with concerns that while this application does not show ADUs associated with the new homes. That that might be envisioned at some point in the future. And I noticed that the bulk table just said that FAR would comply with the twenty five percent requirement. I think I'd like a little more testimony in terms of what the actual size of these homes is and how much of the available FAR is being used by the home. So essentially, to understand whether there is any possibility that ADUs could be introduced at a later date, given the proposal that's before us.
Thank you for that question.
So maybe Eric and I can can tag team this one. I'll I'll remind you that the testimony and the plans submitted were for twenty five hundred square foot homes. So that would not leave any additional room for an ADU. Now, as as lots created at some point, could someone come and and redesign something that had an ADU? I don't know that there's any prohibition on that. That's doesn't, that's not the plan and not what these homes as designed would allow. If if that's helpful, this is not an attempt to sneak that in. We, our our position would be, we'd like these lots to be treated as the other lots on the street are. And and in the future, if somebody wanted to do that, I'm not sure why that should be prohibited. But that is not, that is not our, the the current plan. The plan is to to create something like what what we've shown.
But just to be super clear, if someone were to redesign, the primary dwelling would have to shrink.
Exactly.
Because they would not be able to build more than twenty five hundred square feet of floor area.
Assuming that the the smallest ADU that really is marketable, which is around that eight hundred square foot situation, we would then be looking at a seventeen hundred square foot home with an ADU. They, there is no pool of extra floor area that we, that is available once someone were to put an ADU here. I'll also note that by respecting that front yard setback on the corner lot, there's still plenty of room for really everything to to work comfortably on that lot. But a significant portion of that lot is front yard and citing a ADU on a lot with not just a very large front yard, but one that has two front yards is challenging or, you know, based on some of the applications that maybe the zoning bird is here hearing around now much more than challenging. The the more, you know, the interior lot, there's probably more flexibility there, but Mr. Cohen, you're correct. The the floor area, the limit it would be reached, you'd have to cut the house in half to to allocate something to an ADU.
You know, we have the proportional FAR. But is there been a stipulation that that's not going to be considered, the board in circumstances like this would usually not permit the proportional FAR? But has any discussion occurred on that? I know, Brian, you have.
I thought it was touched on before, and I thought that based on something in one of the memos and based on, or consistent with what we've just been discussing. I assume the board could place a condition that limits the FAR on each lot to twenty five percent.
I'll say, we assumed that you would and also assume that I would object in a way that I will pretend to be doing now and and understand that that's likely what what the end outcome would be. We 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 certainly understand the.
Action noted.
Just just shortcut that, yeah.
Other questions, Mr. Lesko?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, I would just add on the sheet that the engineer was just showing with the zoning chart. It does say that there would be less than twenty five percent maximum FAR as well as thirty percent permitted impervious. Thirty point five percent permitted impervious maximum. So if the board carried those through, I I think that would cover those parts of the eventual site plan.
I'll say, certainly as the floor area, I we we're pleased that we could design something with this little coverage. There is a threshold that we will reach where it will become a major project. We certainly want to avoid that. Um, project, we certainly want to avoid that, um, forty-nine and a half percent is permitted, um, I don't think we'd ever need to approach that, but I. I I'd be reluctant, I don't know that we could agree to a condition that of something that low when forty-nine and a half percent is is. Permitted, particularly when we're about to redesign. Um, something, uh, you know, we we don't want to put a future owner here in a situation where they have less floor area than would be permitted. By a neighbor or the prior lot or that day. Um, you know, adding a flower box or something like that would would trigger unfortunately a a variance condition. But something close to that, certainly, but the. Um, and there's no attempt at sleight of hand here, but what we are proposing is thirty and a half, that might change a little bit after redesign. Um, but uh, the the zone does permit forty-nine and a half, and we're pleased to be well under that.
Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out um that that forty-nine and a half percent. Uh, impervious coverage is for lots that are under a quarter of an acre. Um. Lots that are a quarter of an acre, which is the. Uh, requirement in the zone. Have a lesser allowance, I think it's thirty-six percent.
Right.
So these are still well under the thirty-six percent, but. You know, in a similar. Uh, vein as not allowing bonus FAR. Because of the creation. Uh, of non-conforming lots. I would. I would not advocate. Uh, granting. Higher impervious coverage allowance than would ordinarily be permitted in the zone. Because we. Gave a variance for non-conforming lots, so. I I would be advocating for thirty-six percent. You know, uh. Impervious coverage limit.
Strongly agree.
Understood, I I I would just make sure that that the the discussion didn't go down to uh. The thirty percent that we were pleased that we think we can achieve, but to just to at least be on the same. Level playing field as as the similarly situated neighbors or the lot in the prior condition, right?
Okay. Um. Mister, uh, Mr. Ruben Narain, or have you finished your testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Um. Mr. Kennedy, do you want us to hear? From your planner bef- Uh, David, do you have further, okay, your hand is down now.
Yeah, it was something for the planner, really, so I I hope we'll hear some testimony.
Y- yeah.
I would I would love to have um our our planners' testimony, um, certainly get that out, then we can. Make sure we hear it from as many of the neighbors as possible, but uh.
Yes.
Like to get that on the on the. Uh, the record, um, and answer any any board members' questions that we have on that, um, so Barbara. Want to? Return here?
Yes, I do.
Thank you so much for for patiently waiting here while we uh. Looked at the design of this project, um. Uh. Just to jump right into it, you've you've uh you've visited this site and reviewed the plans that we're looking at here tonight.
Has she been qualified yet, uh?
Yes, yes, she has.
She was, okay.
Um, so.
Let me, yeah. Let me just jump into it.
Yep, and you know, you know what slides we have, I'm happy to put up whatever kind of maps if it's helpful while you're discussing right now, there's a something from the master plan, but if you prefer just a. Uh, an area map, I'd be happy to put that up.
Uh, can you put up slide number seven?
Sure can.
Here we go. Alright, so, uh, good evening, uh, my name is Barbara, I was gonna walk you through this planning testimony this evening. Uh, so on slide number seven, uh, obviously it's showing the characteristics of properties along the northern portion of Collier Avenue, uh, Collier Road. Um.
Kyler.
Kyler, ah.
It's alright, I'm sure we have people who live on that road that want to hear it. That's properly, so go ahead.
Um. But the properties along here actually uh demonstrate a variety of kind of lot widths and lot areas. Uh, there are a number of lots that are point zero two three acres, which is what is proposed this evening. Uh, before I go into really the the variance tests, I always like to review the community's master plan. And in this instance, uh, you have a very recent one in twenty twenty-three, uh, which is uh probably one of the most current I've seen. Um, under the land use element, and it discusses a a missing middle. On page thirty-seven, it says. Allowing greater density by easing certain zoning restrictions will help provide new middle, missing middle housing. The principles of missing middle housing align with the priorities identified throughout the public engagement process. Princeton residents are generally interested in permitting more housing within and around the downtown. Increasing flexibilities to flexibility create ADUs, allowing single-family homes on small or undersized lots. Allowing tiny homes. And permitting the conversion of single-family homes into attached. Residential dwelling buildings. Together, these efforts can increase the availability of housing for middle-income households. Um. And I note under growth, under the section entitled Growth That Reinforces and Strengths Princeton's Community Fabric, the master plan cites. Allowing neighborhoods adjacent to the downtown and the shopping center to add gentle infill. Will bring more households of small and medium-sized within walking distance of mixed-use nodes and their mirrored amenities, significantly reducing the need for individual. Car trips and resulting traffic congestion. So the subject property is actually located approximately a half mile from the Princeton Shopping Center and a. Approximately a half mile in a different direction uh from the community's public um amenities such as the public pool and such. Um. The R six district is located is uh within an area characterized as central neighborhood, which I believe was uh depicted on slide number eight, which is the next slide. Was I wrong? Nine. There we go. So you can see we're in the central neighborhood uh district. Uh, with respect to this district, the master plan says, central neighborhood areas include single-family dwellings. On small lots, two-family dwellings, townhouses, and multifamily housing at densities between four and twenty units per acre. These areas are characterized by the relative absence of environmental constraints. The availability of utilities and services, including transit. In close proximity to the downtown business district and Princeton Shopping Center. Central neighborhood areas are most appropriate for infill and transit-oriented redevelopment. So your master plan is seeking to allow. A little bit higher density in these neighborhoods in order to kind of fill in the housing stock. And it recognizes that this that the central neighborhood is a perfect area for this. It's located uh along existing infrastructure, so there's already water, sewer, roadways. Um, access to public transportation, access. To re- uh retail, access to municipal services in these areas. Um. And it it specifically says. Or points to uh permitting maybe somewhat smaller lot sizes in order to accommodate this. And this application is on point with these goals and objectives. Um, I also note that, as was shown in the previous slide, uh, that a lot of this size or lots of these size would not be uncharacteristic within this particular neighborhood. Uh, when we discuss uh variances, we also discuss the purposes of zoning. And in this, I would opine that it uh promotes um to see to provide adequate light air and open space. So although the parcels will be slightly undersized for the district, uh, they will respect lot, they will respect all setbacks, lock coverages, building heights. Uh, floor area ratio standards, um, the full gambit. Um. Uh, it would also opine E to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations. That would contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, and regions, and preservation of the environment. In this instance, uh, the area proposed of each of the lots is characteristic within the neighborhood. Um, it's not increasing density necessarily beyond what is already existing and what is envisioned for the area. Uh, and. And to encourage coordination of various public and private procedures and activities shaping land development. With a view of lessening the cost of such development and to the more efficient use of land. Uh, so this is an existing oversized parcel within the district uh that can provide for gentle infill within the neighborhood. Um. And provide two single-family homes which are permitted within the district. Um. It also speaks to the environmental concerns of the community and that this is a parcel that is already developed. Um, and yes, it'll be subdivided, uh, but again, it can use existing infrastructure, uh, so services will not necessarily have to be extended to a new area. Uh, with respect to the bulk variance sought, uh, which is the lot area for each parcel, I would opine that it would qualify under the C two criteria. Uh, and the C two, uh, we often describe as a balance test or or how it presents a better zoning alternative. And that the benefit occurs not just to the homeowner or to the property owner, uh, but to the community itself. Um. And this speaks to uh the Kaufman cases, is where we typically pull that information from. Um, so as I've discussed, the the proposed subdivision speaks directly to the master plan and what is envisioned for this uh central neighborhood. Uh, of providing for that uh additional density or these. These medium or small-sized homes that provide for a middle housing for the community. Um. And as I also said, the property is situated within a portion of the community that exhibits these traits, it it they won't be unique lots that. Necessarily are sore thumb within the neighborhood, but instead. Provide a visual continuity uh along the roadway. Uh, with respect to the negative criteria, I do not see any, uh, the single-family homes as proposed will not generate. Um, significant or substantial detriments with regards to traffic noise or trash. As the use, the single-family home is anticipated within the zone and the zone. Therefore anticipates the impacts associated with same. Um. So with that respect, I I do believe that the application does meet the criteria for the C two variance and that it does prevent uh present on a balance of positive for the community. Uh, are there any questions that I can answer?
Any questions from board members? For Ms. Ellen? I don't see any, thank you.
Thanks for that. My pleasure.
Um. Anything anybody else wants to raise before we go to public comment? Mr. Lesko?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, uh, I had one other comment, um. That Kyler Road is not listed as part of the proposed sidewalk network uh of the the sidewalk network map. Of the master plan, which was carried over from the twenty-seventeen map. Um, so all of those things that we were talking about earlier. About requirements and waivers and all that don't apply, let me just be clear about that real quick. That being said, um, with at least one of the buildings fronting on Kyler, uh. The applicant may seek to add a sidewalk. Uh, from the corner of Jefferson through to the frontage of these two properties, um. To create a better pedestrian atmosphere, especially with the second house fronting on Kyler.
Yep. I agree with that. Um. Okay, seeing no other comments from board members, I will. Um. Open the meeting to. Public comment now, so there are forty-one members of the public, two, two people have their hands up already, first. Doug Rubin and then Jess and then Serena Connolly, so several hands going up now, um. Uh, if you're going to want to address the board. Uh, tonight about this application, um, now is the time to raise your hand. So, um. I think that Carrie has brought over. Uh, a few. Or the first uh couple of people, who do we have first, Carrie?
That would be Doug Rubin.
Okay. Hi, Mr. Rubin. Uh, we just need to swear you in and then um then you can. Uh, fire away. Mr. Muller?
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give we the truth?
Yes, I swear.
So sworn or firm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Douglas Rubin, R U B I N.
Good, thank you.
I've been a resident of this area. Right around the corner for twenty-five years, I live about two hundred feet. Due west of the corner. Uh, pri- prior, I lived on the other side of Kyler Road on Ewing Street, I ride my bicycle, I walk around this area all the time. Um, I know the house very well because we used to bring our child. To uh Alyssa Wells, had a baby care service there, we used Tom Wells uh as our electrician occasionally. The house is not good. It does not have a good face on Jefferson Road. Uh, I also want to point out the house right across the street, which is one fifty-one, Mount Lucas, does not front Jefferson Road either. So I know this corner very well, uh, anything in this lot would be an improvement. Um. Uh, this property was run down twenty years ago. I'm, I I it's a great location, as the planner talked about, walking distance to so much, we love the area. I don't see any reason why it would be bad to build two homes here. And I really hope on the the council, first of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity, and I hope uh the planning board approves this. And um, you know, let's and one additional family move into Princeton because I love our new neighbors, that's it, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin, appreciate that. Um.
The next person is Jess and then Serena Connolly and Tom Judson.
Great.
Jess, if you could raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give be the truth?
Yes.
Okay, could you uh? State your full names for your last name?
Um, it's Jessica Atkins and my last name is A T K I N S.
Thank you.
Go right ahead.
Okay, so I also live in the neighborhood, I've lived here for almost ten years, just right around the corner, about a block away. And um, I want to uh second what Mrs. Ms. Wilson and Ms. Sax said that uh. Making the facade face Jefferson because Jefferson is absolutely the dominant road, um. Coiler uh or Kyler, that's the side road, it's just, I mean, you don't even see it like when you when you're going by, so. It would be very odd to have the side of a house facing Jefferson and it would just kind of ruin the character of the neighborhood. Um, also, thank you for conforming to the setbacks because that's also very, very important, I mean, if you've ever been on the street, it is extremely distinct. And it would be very nice to keep the character. Um. Of Jefferson because it really contributes to how the neighborhood looks. Um, and then my other two points are about impervious surface, so this neighborhood has a lot of flooding flooding problems, like a lot. And a lot of times they're being um handled by these rain gardens, which actually hold, some of them have been holding like a lot of water. Even even though they drain after a few days, sometimes you go by and there's a lot of algae growing in them, they look awful, I think they're dangerous for small children. Um. And I don't want to see gigantic rain gardens put on additional front yards, so having entirely. A lot of impervious surface leads to that and that's um a negative, and then. Um, my last point is I disagree that this is missing middle housing, I mean, that twenty-five hundred square foot house is very large. Um, and also. The median income from Princeton, according to the twenty-twenty-two census, was forty of uh. Uh, forty-nine thousand dollars. So a house that is twenty-five hundred square feet, that's five bedrooms, is probably going to be one point five million dollars or more, which means that you need. Over two hundred thousand dollars of income to afford that house. So that's absolutely not missing metal, that's not what the town intended, I don't think, when they started this, um. And I do favor affordable housing, I do favor development, but I don't favor um using these kinds of things as an excuse, um. But like I said, I do appreciate trying to conform to the neighborhood and making things fit in because it's really important to be sensitive to that. Because I've seen a few streets in Princeton where that has not happened, and they look like a mess. And um. Linden Lane is one of them, so sorry, I hope no one lives there, but it looks, it looks terrible. And it did not look like that when I moved here, um, and I would really hate to see that happen to my neighborhood. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next person is Serena Connolly and then Tom Judson.
Ms. Connolly, if you could raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or firm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Serena Connolly, C O N N O L L Y.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, this is the second planning board meeting in the space of a week that is considering subdivisions in the streets near the shopping center. Once again, members of the Princeton community are showing up to express their concern at these subdivisions. And their repressive developers to seek variances to regulations that are already in place. The application is for non-conforming lots. Just because the town a half century ago built point two three acre lots doesn't mean we should now. The frequency of these kinds of meetings is no accident. Developers in Princeton are perhaps aware. That they might simply seek so many variances for so many lots in so many meetings on such short notice. That community members will find it difficult to mobilize in order to make their voices. that community members will find it difficult to mobilize in order to make their voices heard. Developers know that they just need to wear us down. But why should we find ourselves, this community, needing to mobilize so often? Isn't the planning board, its members residents of Princeton, meant to represent the needs of this community when considering applications? Increasingly, it doesn't feel that way. Increasingly, it feels as though the developers' financial needs come first. The ideology of small city advocates comes second and the needs and views of the wider community comes last. So please, members of the planning board, there are reasons we have planning regulations to safeguard everyone's enjoyment of their property, their neighborhood, their town. Listen to your community first, not the developers. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Connolly.
Okay, Tom Judson is the next person to speak and then Paul Wahlberg.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
If you could raise your right hand and
And you, Mr. Judson, excuse me, um Jerry, can you activate your camera, Tom Judson?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
If you could raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm a testimony about to give be the truth?
Yes.
So sworn or firm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Tom Judson, J U D S O N.
Thank you.
Go right ahead.
I live on the same block, uh twenty six Kyler Road in a house, two properties away. Uh, grew up here starting in nineteen sixty nine and just recently became the owner. And that way, I'm one of the oldest residents and one of the newest owners. I, the house here is undeveloped and I intend to keep it undeveloped, not to expand it at all. While growing up here, I saw modest changes to single story houses along the lines of filling in the carport to add one or two more rooms. Along those lines, an adjacent house, I'm on fifty nine, lot fifty nine. Lot fifty seven is doing internal developments or redeveloping the house by doing some internal reconstruction. Similarly, as in apples and oranges, just uh comparison, in my opinion, to say that the house is a block away that are slightly smaller, that were allowed to be such years ago are similar, are in some way like these new properties. They weren't subdivided. They're not square. They're all single story. They're not two and really half story with the extra attic. They're not the new McMansions, which is where the uh the new ones are appearing to be in the in the diagrams represented. Um, just to wrap up, the existing developments didn't divide the lots, it didn't multiply the units. And doing so would not be the kind of gradual departure. It would be an abrupt lurching change to the quality of the neighborhood and really a signal change to the way that Princeton is being developed. It's an ongoing change that's bigger. It's a subdivision and a multiplying of units that doesn't even preclude an eventual four unit area. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Judson.
So the next person is Paul Wahlberg. I've moved him over already and then Michael Bell will be next.
Mr. Wahlberg, if you could raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give be the truth?
I do.
Okay, please state your full name and spell your last name.
My name is Paul Wahlberg. My last name is spelled W A L B E R G.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you for providing me an opportunity to speak. I live at three ninety three Walnut Lane, approximately a block away from the house in question. Um, as I said last time during the the proposal that was reviewed last week for sixty eight Ewing, I am opposed to the subdivision of this lot for the very same reason that I'm opposed to the lot of four sixty eight Ewing. Many of us did not know about this until the last minute. We feel like the planning board has pushed a lot of ideology on us that we didn't know about until the last minute and you gave us no time to review the plan and no time to react. Then you said we didn't have to worry about it because it wouldn't matter until the um until the council reviewed the um the zoning laws and now it appears that's different. You're going ahead with your plans with individual developers coming to you for adjustments. Subdividing these lots the way you are, where we already have ADUs, will allow the building of four family homes where there's originally one and that is our problem. They do not need to subdivide this because they can already build two houses using the ADU law. That would at least limit the density to the two and that's much better than turning around, taking lots that are small next to other small ones, making more small ones and then using that to argue for even more small ones, including all of the ones on Walnut Lane. We're only now beginning to understand what's happening. I think as many people start to see additional projects like this showing up next to theirs, they're going to be upset too. Um, so please do not allow these subdivisions. They can already build two homes with the current laws as they are. And please follow your own zoning regulations before you march into our neighborhood and blow them out of the water. Even though everybody says they're opposed to it, I'd now like to give the rest of my time to um Patricia uh who is here and has had some trouble getting her internet to work. Is that okay with you? Can I give my time here and just let her sit down and you can swear her in?
Um, we we allow each person who speaks to have three minutes. So if you have
That's fine. And thank you also for giving us all time since you take two hours out of your out of our schedules to listen to you. Thank you for giving us three minutes each. I appreciate it. And also for not even allowing me to defer my time to anyone else.
Oh, um
No, I think I think he, she was going to let me have three minutes.
Yes, three minutes, that's what you get.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, can can I go? I know, I know Michael Bell is also waiting, but could I go now since we're here?
If you could raise your right
Uh, yes.
I ran over from my house. My, my, my camera wasn't working.
If you could That's fine. Thank you.
If you could raise your right hand, I'll swear you in.
Certainly.
Swear or affirm the testimony about to give be the truth?
Yes.
So sworn or firm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Patricia Lothberg, L O F B E R G.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Um, my name is Patricia Lothberg and I live at seventy nine Kyler. Um, previously, I've had the pleasure to address the board for a variance for my own property. And I had to notify neighbors with certified letters and post that information, you know, in the newspaper. And I'm very concerned that I and many of my neighbors had not received any information about this subdivision uh on Jefferson and also the one on Ewing. And I realize that there may be, I don't know how many feet away you are um to decide who gets notified. But I think that it should be considered to expand these notifications that are seeking a change to the character of a neighborhood to ensure that the entire neighborhood, I I'm on, I've got one on one side and one on the other and knew nothing about it until today. Now to get to the tonight's topic, I and the other neighbors are very opposed to the splitting of these two of this property into two nonconforming lots. And I'm very concerned it will allow four houses to be built where there was originally one. And I know that some of you have brought that up tonight and tried to make sure that there will not be those other um buildings, but I want to be sure that that would not happen and we want one house on that lot. Um, this is a quality of life issue for our neighborhood. We are a diverse neighborhood with young families and older families. Come to our neighborhood and you'll see parents pushing strollers, children on tricycles and bicycles, walkers and runners and people walking their dogs. Neighbors from adjoining neighborhoods come to our neighborhood to walk because it's safe, aesthetic aesthetically pleasing, sorry. Um, with our property setback and lovely landscapes. To add these houses and additional cars at the corner of Kyler and Jefferson presents safety concerns. Children walk and ride bikes to school. Turning into Kyler Road from Jefferson is narrow and with additional car volume there creates a potential safety problem. Not all of my neighbors could attend this evening. So even with the short notice, we have gathered forty one names of neighbors opposed to this subdivision. And in four hours, we did that today. And I would like to read those names to the board now. We, the undersigned, are opposed to the
Excuse me. Uh petitions are not permitted.
It's not a petition.
It it it's not permitted as a matter of law.
All right, well, just for the matter of record, we have forty one names who are opposed to this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Please, consider our neighborhood. Consider the way Jefferson should look, as you've brought up tonight, and our small neighborhood where this these two houses will be at the end and they're probably going to add two more on and cause more problems at the entrance to our neighborhood. Thank you.
Ms. Lothberg, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bell?
Yes, can you hear me?
Thank, uh, yes, we can. And thank you for, thank you for waiting. Not expected.
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm a testimony about to give be the truth?
I do.
So sworn, um, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Michael Bell, last name B E L L, one oh three Kyler Road. This is the second time in a week that I've addressed this planning board about the matter of subdivisions. First for four sixty nine Ewing, now at the end of Kyler Road, where we see the creation of nonconforming lots. Four sixty nine Ewing is more drastic because their four houses are proposed on what was originally a point four four acre lot. At the moment, the developer says he's only going to put up two houses here. But this is a subdivision hearing, not a a file planning approval. What's to say that that plan that was presented will not come back and morph into four houses with an ADU on each lot? You can't guarantee that. The other thing I'm very concerned about is impervious coverage. As uh Board Member Cohen has stated, there should be no bonus for splitting an existing lot into a nonconforming lot and seeing the impervious coverage limit go from thirty six up to forty, up to forty nine and a half percent just because the lots become nonconforming. That is wrong. That's what I previously called sleight of hand on the part of developers, not on the part of the board, I reiterate. And I think it's very important that that condition be attached if this is approved. That's all I want to say. I agree with all of the neighbors who've been before uh in opposition to this. That site should be developed, but it should be in a, you know, a single family home. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
I've already moved Micah Fearing over and Bill Dampier is next.
Mr. Fearing could raise his right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or firm?
Thanks. Hi, everybody. It's nice to see uh all the members of the planning board and everyone else here. Um, usually, I often I'm on the other side because I do development applications in Princeton. Um, I live at four sixty three Jefferson Road. It's the other house on the corner of Jefferson and Kyler. Um, and I really appreciate the board spending all this time to hear the application tonight. Uh, I think a lot of great things were said. What I'm really concerned about is that we do get plans before we just approve a subdivision. I think there's been a lot of good comments about having the house front Jefferson so that it's consistent with the streetscape. And also about how the kind of the layouts of the house is the other one on Kyler too. I think they're both important for the Kyler Street. Um, so I I really appreciate the board's comments about, you know, probably that this I don't think that if this is to be subdivided, it should be subdivided until it's really clear what the plans are so that there's full transparency because this is a big deal for the neighborhood. Um, people are, I've spoken to people, I've had people knock on my door. You know, people are really not happy with the plans as presented. And to kind of, you know, quote the applicant, there were some last minute changes made um, two days ago, you know, before they were seeking these big setbacks. Now they're saying they're not. We want to make sure that whatever they're proposing really does work. Um, and I think before we we take any actions, it's important to make sure that things are, you know, thought through. Um, you know, that said, to be honest, I don't support this subdivision. Uh, I do think that um what we're creating here is not middle housing. It's two houses that are probably going to sell for more, you know, close to two million dollars per house. Um, and there already is, you know, a mechanism by which two houses can be built here and it's called an ADU. And a lot of what has been said is that we should have a house that fronts Jefferson and we could totally have a house that fronts Jefferson and then an ADU, you know, fronting Kyler. And that there is, you know, so that mechanism really exists. And, you know, making more money is not a hardship. Um, I think that was brought up in the last discussion. So I'm wondering what the hardship is here and why two homes can't be created. One front, one larger home fronting Jefferson and then a smaller home um, which would provide that middle missing house, much more so than these two two million dollar homes. And, you know, I am generally for more density in town. I'm generally for, you know, more happening rather than less, but I just in this, you know, I guess in this instance, I don't see why we can't have both the affordable house and the other house. Um, but either way, I I definitely think there should be transparency and we should hopefully get the plans. And I really appreciate everyone's time. And I think that this has been a great meeting so far and that there has been the thought that, you know, needs to go into this. And I will defer to whatever, you know, obviously the board decides is the right path to go to. Um, whether it's requiring the plans or whether it's, you know, either way, but thank you so much, everybody, for your time. It's been a long night and um I really appreciate it. So with that, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Fearing.
I just wanted to announce I have uh five, four people with their hands up. One person has declined several times. That's Mr. Dampier. We have Samuel Bunting, Liz Divich and Toby Israel.
Okay, is um
Willie, Willie Wu is the next.
Yeah, Mr. Wu is next, right?
Oh, Willie Wu, yes, I did bring him over. I'm so sorry.
That's okay. Can you see me?
Yes, if you could raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm a testimony about to give be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or firm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
William Wu, last name spelled W U.
Thank you.
Uh, this is the first time I attended this type of meeting here in Princeton, even though I've been here for quite a few years. I must commend the board here. I was very impressed with the questions you folks actually asked the developer. And I love these questions. I feel like I'm in good hands in terms of uh uh the importance of Jefferson. I live on Jefferson. And the importance of uh keeping a requirement on uh on the zoning requirements. I do hear also my neighbor's voice. I must say, I haven't been here that long. I used to live in Lawrenceville. Uh, now coming to think about it, uh, we live in Princeton now for almost close to ten years. I, we love the ambiance and the whole township. And we also do see the need for development. Uh, we are new, so we don't really resist having new neighbors. At the same time, though, I do hear the voice of my neighbors here. I probably would think when we move in, they didn't probably quite welcome us. Uh, that's the honest truth. That's how I feel. So there is this balance of development and keeping what Princeton has been and what's the attraction of Princeton. And the last I want to reiterate, I just feel like I, we're in good hands with the board members here. Uh, in particular, I must say, uh, Mr. David Cohen and Ms. Sax uh do seem to uh uh represent what I was thinking. Uh, thank you so much for the opportunity to share my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Wu, and thank you for your kind words. Thank you. Is Mr. Bunting next, Carrie?
Yes.
Welcome, Sam. Mr. Muller will swear you in.
If you could raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or firm?
Uh, Samuel Bunting of ninety nine Dempsey Avenue. I wasn't going to speak tonight because um I I thought that the comments from the board members were mostly reasonable. But I have to say something because I have to push back. on this idea that everyone in the neighborhood is against this subdivision. I am not against it. I stand with Doug Rubin in agreeing that this is a perfectly reasonable subdivision. What's more, there has been shenanigans from people who ought to know better. And they know who they are, and I know who you are. And I don't like it scaring up this opposition and fear in the neighborhood over an application which is really quite modest. Look at the application as it is proposed. It proposes to create two lots of zero-point-two-three acres, entirely consistent with many of the existing lots along Kyler Road. The idea that we are somehow turning Princeton into Manhattan or something from this, it's just not correct. What we are talking about are de minimis variances, only a fraction lower than the minimum lot size, which most of the lots on Kyler Road do not even conform to. I think it's sad that people have gone around trying to scare up our neighbors about this application. This application is not a significant change to the neighborhood. With the conditions that the planning board have already enumerated, it would be entirely reasonable to approve this. My, I, I must say, you know what? I'm going to stop there. I think it's a reasonable application with the condition of the house front on to Jefferson Road. Many of us in the neighborhood are entirely content with this kind of proposal, which will produce some very nice new homes for the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bunting. Who's next, Carrie?
I'm sorry, I've already moved over.
Liz.
And the next person is Toby Israel.
Okay.
If you could raise your right hand. You swear or affirm the testimony about to give be the truth?
And you're on mute still, so can you can unmute yourself?
Yes, I do. Yeah, I'm Elizabeth.
You need to state your full name and spell your last name, please?
I will. Elizabeth Dyvich, D Y E V like Victor I C H.
Thank you.
Thanks, go right ahead.
I live at three seventy-six Jefferson Road. My house directly faces the lot on Jefferson Road, not on the Kyler. I live on the Jefferson side directly across the street. Just a couple of quick points. I am opposed to the subdivision. I feel that for many reasons, it is not keeping it with character with the neighborhood. I also feel like we're trying to provide housing for people, and I don't, moderate housing, which I think is so lacking in Princeton. And by putting both houses, they're going to both be, I would say, over two million dollars each, which doesn't create any more homes for people who are trying to move into Princeton. I also feel that, obviously, I do not want to look at the side of someone's house when I would look straight out to please, I agree with everyone, to please have it face Jefferson so I can at least look the front of someone's house when it comes out. And my other question is, are you allowed to tell us who the builder would be for the houses?
Well, the, the application before us is for the subdivision, and there's been test, there's been discussion by the board that we should have architectural plans as well, but but, but the answer is no. I, I, I don't, well, Mr. Kennedy can address that question. Wait, can you pause the clock, Ian, while Mr. Kennedy answers the question? Ryan, are there developers?
So the, the applicant is the developer. Apologies, there's a confusion there. But yeah, no, it's and, and just to be clear, while we're discussing revisions to the plans, full architectural plans for both lots and houses were submitted and on file with the town. To, to file, to revise them, and that you'd like to see them if, if the one lot is, is revised architecturally. But just, just wanted to be clear that those are all on file, and, you know, we focused our presentation on the, on the subdivision and the planning things, but they're all, all there in it.
Okay, I just didn't know if they knew who the builder was going to be yet. Okay.
Okay, Ian, you can start the clock again. Excuse me, Miss Dyvich, I didn't.
It's fine.
Confusing things, but, oh, not from the start, but, oh.
Oh, that's fine.
God, you got about a minute.
Reiterate that I really am opposed to the subdivision. If it has to happen, I definitely would prefer that the house front Jefferson and the, the other one on Kyler.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And Ian, I'm, I'm sorry for confusing things. Go ahead, Carrie.
Toby Israel is the last person that I'm aware of to speak.
I think we have someone else after that whose name is Maggie.
Mr. Israel, if you could raise your right hand.
Ms., Ms. Israel, I think.
Oh, Ms.?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give will be the truth?
Uh, you're on mute. There we go.
Yeah, yes, I do.
Right, so sworn or affirmed.
Okay, so it just strikes me that there's a bit of history missing here. I'm at four twenty-nine Walnut Lane. My house is on the corner of Walnut and Kyler. And so now I've been here thirty years, so I'm, I'm kind of giving this history secondhand. But as I understand it, Kyler, the, the name Kyler comes from the builder Kyler, who either the township or a foundation hired to build these houses, particularly to create an integrated neighborhood in Princeton, those neighborhoods being few and far between. And they were particularly designed to be affordable housing. And in fact, at one point, there was some thinking that they would ask for this to be a historic neighborhood to preserve that very history, to ensure that that affordability remained in place. So while I'm not jumping up and down and, you know, screaming about these two houses, they're certainly not affordable. And apropos of reading the portion of the master plan, the whole part about missing middle, middle and affordable dwelling units is that we preserve that affordability and thereby ensure that there's diversity in the town as well. So again, as some other people have said, I would guess that these are going to be one-point-five million or more, and thus going exactly against what those statements in the town plan were trying to ensure. So I, I really have a question about that. Secondly, I, another part of the history here is, and maybe some of you can help me out, about ten or fifteen years ago, when we were revalued, what happened was there was a sleight of hand, and the tax burden went from the western section to our section of town. And that was because we were the place that has these empty lots. Builders would come in, developers would come in, buy these lots and build these one-point-five-million-dollar houses. Plus, which meant that the town tax, taxman would look at by law, anything, any neighborhood that, where the values went up more than fifteen percent. And those neighborhoods had to have higher taxes. So there's that tax question too. So I think some of this history has to be put into the mix and thought very deeply about before approving houses that would change the historical nature of the town in this social sense and just change perhaps our tax burden as well.
Thank you. Thanks for that.
Okay, the next person is Maggie and then Hillary Persky.
Maggie, if you could raise your right hand.
Can you activate your cap? There you go.
Hi.
You swear or affirm the testimony about to give be the truth?
I do.
Okay, please say your full name and spell your last name.
Maggie Deppenbrock, D E P E N as in Nancy, B as in boy, R O C K.
Thank you.
Yep. Hi, thanks for letting me speak. My name's Maggie. I live on three-three-three Nassau Street. I'm not a direct neighbor of this proposal in question, but I am a resident of Princeton, and I have been a one, a homeowner here for the last twenty years. I wanted to just echo my support for many of the neighbors that I hear, hear speak tonight. I too am not in support of this subdivision, primarily because I, I quite honestly don't understand the hardship that the developer has. And I am concerned that some of the justification that was pointed to relates directly to the master plan that we just discussed a few months back, where we were all assured to calm down, that no zoning laws would be changing overnight. Yet here we are with a developer pointing to that exact master plan, trying to justify why this subdivision should be granted. And I also want to just echo and agree with many of the comments Ms. Connolly raised, asking this board to start listening to the residents of this town that have just woken up and are starting to pay attention. Please listen to us. We love our town. We don't want it drastically changed. We're not anti-development. We're not anti-new residents and new neighbors. But, you know, we, we'd ask that you consider the character and what makes Princeton special and a place where people want to live here. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Hillary Persky is next.
Hi, I'm trying to go on camera. There you go. Hi, thanks very much.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So sworn or affirmed.
Thank you. Thanks very much. I'll keep this very, very short. I just wanted to speak very briefly in favor of those who oppose the subdivision, many of whom I know to be quite upstanding, somewhat surprised by my other neighbor's statement. I live on one hundred Kyler Road, so I'm quite close to where this is proposed. And really, what I want to say is brief that one of the things I have valued most about this neighborhood where I've lived for about thirteen years are the small homes, the relatively affordable homes in a very expensive town. And it makes me sad to see more and more small homes replaced with very large homes that I could not afford. And that's pretty much what I want to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Persky. Are there any other members of the public who wish to address the board on this application? Let's see, Mary LaPlaca has raised their hand. Anyone else? Now is the time to raise your hand. Carrie, can you bring Ms. LaPlaca over? There we go.
Could you raise your right hand? She on you?
She's in the participants' room, but Ms. LaPlaca, you need to activate your camera and unmute yourself. There we go. Okay, and her hand is raised, Mr. Mueller. She's ready.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed.
My name is Mary LaPlaca, and it's spelled L A capital P L A C A.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
Hi, good evening or late evening to everyone. I live on Hamilton Avenue, not too far, a couple of blocks. And I've driven down Jefferson for many years on my way to teaching. It's a beautiful street, especially now with all the construction. Where I live, there's a breath of fresh air. It's a nice wide road. The houses are set back. It's beautiful, and I think my concern is not that there, a new home will be built there or even possibly two homes. My concern, as it is throughout Princeton, is just the loss of imperial surfaces, porous surfaces for this increase in climate we're experiencing. And obviously, the more building, the more surface coverage, the more driveway, the more of everything makes Princeton much more susceptible to flooding. And as where I live, Hamilton Avenue, the infrastructure is old, there's flooding. I've also experienced sewer backup into my basement from the town. So these are things to consider. And again, you know, when new homes are built, more surfaces are covered. Makes a bigger imprint in the town. And I just feel and that we talk about open space and preserving it. Really, our neighborhood, our lawns, our property are really the biggest open space that we have in Princeton. It's the grass, it's the plants, it's the bushes, it's all of that that we have in our yards that help us fight pollution or invite, you know, just nature in. So building is going to happen. It's happening on my street. Larger houses are being built. Change is inevitable. But when the zoning board considers this and they give a little bit of land, a little bit of inch, and they change the variances, all of a sudden, our structures become much more larger. We lose that neighborhood feels. So I'm just asking to be very careful. And I don't believe it's extenuating circumstances that this variance should be granted. I think it should fit within the existing zoning laws, and I do support a lot of the neighbors who feel that we need to be, be careful in granting these variances. I'm not against building, but just making sure it fits the climate and the long pro, the long-term process of what our neighborhood would look like in ten or thirty years. And I also agree that building a home that's going to be over a million dollars is not a middle-class home. Most to, if I said to someone, I've got a great home for you. It's middle-class, but it's one-point-two million. I don't think they would consider that a very affordable home for most people. So if that's the goal, then we're not meeting it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. So we have two more people who have raised their hands, maybe three?
P Rider is being moved over first. Mr. Setfin declined. Perhaps he wants to speak a little bit later.
Okay.
Mr. Rider, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm?
Wait, wait just a sec, Jerry. Can you activate your camera? P R E I D E R. Okay, now, now he's ready to.
Be sworn in.
To be sworn in, yes.
If you could, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give be the truth?
We are not hearing you.
We can't hear you.
Now your mute thing is on. Is there a is there a separate mute on your keyboard that might be activated or? We're still not hearing you at all.
He, he doesn't seem to be saying anything, though.
He, he did.
Yes.
Can be a little hard to tell with the big bushy mustache, but he was.
Yes, he's definitely unable to be heard. So Mr. Lesko, are you checking to see whether there's anything on our end?
No, no, I don't think so, but I was just going to suggest, if you went, this trick works ninety percent of the time. If you go to the little microphone in probably the lower left corner and the carrot next to it, you could change your microphone. And sometimes swapping that around, for whatever reason, allows you to speak.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. The fact that I have taught so many classes at Princeton. Thank you. Um, the fact that I have taught so many classes at Princeton during COVID, you think that I would remember how to do this, uh, but it's actually your system. Uh, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give be the truth?
Yes, counselor, thank you.
Please say your full name and spell your last name.
All last name is Ryder, R E I D S, David E R. Uh, I I want to thank you all. I think you've done a spectacular job running the meeting for both sessions. They were fascinating. We live at three seventy-seven Walnut Lane in Princeton and have for the past fifteen years. We could have lived on Library Place. We came to Princeton when I came here to teach chemistry to uh join a very diverse neighborhood. The Kyler Ranches are spectacular homes. The neighborhoods are amazing. And we expanded our home, but kept the footprint, the the front to remain as a Kyler Ranch because of the history you heard Toby talk about. Uh, this diverse neighborhood is not just diverse ethnically, it's diverse economically. And we're starting to lose that, as you can see. And I would strongly support the idea of, I think, helping the developers say what they want to do about the master plan and let them keep the existing lot as a single lot and put in one unit that will be spectacularly beautiful and expensive and can face Jefferson and have the other unit be an affordable house, which they know they can do and that can face Kyler and stay with the character of the community. The idea of having a split lot really seems to not benefit anybody in the community except the developers. And I I think you've gotten that sense from everybody who lives around here. The uh, my wife and I walk past that corner virtually every day. And uh, you can't imagine if you haven't been to this neighborhood, what it feels like. This is a very special place. There was even mentioned the monthly potluck dinners that we've had that we were welcomed to Princeton. We met seventy-five of our neighbors the first month we were here. This is not just a place for Princeton professors. This is a place for Masons, for lower-middle-class people who have come from abroad. It's a terrific neighborhood. I'm proud to live here, and I really am worried that it's going to be destroyed if we continue to cut it up in pieces and build very large homes on time. And again, forgive me for my inadequacy with the technology, which my students would laugh at at this point. Thank you.
No problem at all. Thank you.
Okay, we have one more person who has his hand raised, but he has declined my invitation several times. So uh, Mr. Setfin, if you need to speak, then you have to accept the invitation or lower your hand. Okay, he's declined again.
Uh, is that like clicking a button that says decline?
I'm not sure how it shows on there.
Yep.
Uh, all right, okay. Uh, so last call for folks who want to address the board, assuming Mr. Setfin is is declining. Anyone else? Now's the time to raise your hand. Not seeing any hands go up, so I'll close the public.
No.
Well, this is my.
Belle already spoke.
Spoken already, so um, close the um.
Unless it's his wife. Unless it's his wife. Do you think it's his wife?
Um, okay. That's a good, that's a good thought, Carrie. Um, bring Mr. Bell over, and if it's his wife, we we have not yet heard from her and we can hear from her.
Unable to start video. Okay, start video. Oh, start my video. There we go. There you are. Okay. If you could raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So sworn affirm. Please state your full name and spell your last name.
My name is Jane McCarthy. M C capital C A R T Y.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you very much for taking my testimony at such late notice. Um, I agree with many of the other residents of the area that we do have a unique neighborhood here. And putting, subdividing a property and allowing very large homes to be built there does not meet the needs of the middle, missing middle that people keep talking about providing homes for. These are going to be very expensive homes that don't meet that need. The other point I wanted to make is when the comparison of lot sizes is done, the applicant put all the houses that were on the same side of the street as examples. Well, the neighborhood is not just the one side of the street. The other side of the street has much larger lot sizes and should be considered too. So just because you have pre-existing lots that are non-compliant doesn't give you permission to say, oh, this is a great idea to go and make more non-compliant ha- bots, which is what you're doing. Those lots that were pre-existing were there before the zoning was put into place. So it's a whole different set of rules. And I think that's all I have to say, but I wanted to make sure you paid attention to what what the uh lot sizes are on the other side of the road as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCarthy. But with that, I will close the public comment portion of the meeting um and invite uh comments and thoughts from board members. We have uh eight minutes um until our witching hour. Clearly not going to finish everything tonight. Um, but I want to hear what people think. Um, Mr. Cohen and then Ms. Sacks.
Yeah, so number one, I wanted to um recognize Ms. McCarthy's comment. It was one that I was thinking of making myself. I think the applicant's diagram uh showing the non-compliant lots uh was cropped in a misleading way. I think that not only are the lots on the other side of Kyler a different size, but also the lots along Jefferson are a different size and and that's you know, a part of the consideration. So I just want to recognize that uh, the accuracy of that comment and and express my own disappointment or concern that the applicant um chose to present in that way. Uh, on the flip side, I want to say that I heard the suggestions about, you know, why can't the applicant just do a single family home with an EDU? It'll give them the same number of units. We'll get one that's a little bit more affordable than what we would under this application. And um, that is true. But if we deny the subdivision and have them do that, then they've got an as-of-right application, and we can't really ask for any of the things that we can ask for uh in the case of this this application where we're granting variances and and in order to sort of make the the scales of the positives and the negatives uh more favorable for the town that we can ask for certain things. One of the things I would think about uh and ask the board to think about for our next meeting is stormwater management, because I think that that's been a comment that numbers of the residents have made. I I think it's very valid. I think that um I would be interested in um looking for something beyond just the base of what's required. Uh, in this instance, I, you know, haven't figured out what. But um, you know, if we grant the subdivision, we have some opportunities to um to uh negotiate with the with the applicant and get some benefits in exchange for it, which we wouldn't get, you know, with an as-of-right application.
Thank you. Great point. Mia?
Yeah, um, I was just gonna say, you know, the frustrating thing about hearing um all of the discussion tonight, first of all, is one of my frustrations always on the planning board is that I like to have dialogue and and I would love to go back and, you know, have this be an ongoing dialogue in it and and we're not able to do that in this context, but um, you know, there's a fundamental misunderstanding here uh uh in the in the neighborhood and and I mean, I think in Princeton in general and neighbor after neighbor said, don't do the subdivision because we want to have smaller, more affordable houses. And um, and the planner's testimony was very unfortunate and really, you know, clearly the planner doesn't uh have a grasp on what's happening in Princeton. And and so I I'm disregarding that. These are, this is not missing middle. Um, but there are, what the neighbors seek to achieve is not possible on this lot. If we do not do the subdivision, what they will have is an as-of-light right, very large McMansion. What they will have, if the subdivision is granted, is not more affordable missing middle, but two houses, which based on the looks of it, are more similar to the houses in Kyler, certainly more similar than Micah Firing's house, who has a large house that is quite dissimilar um to the rest of the structures in the neighborhood. Um, but um, those are our options. We don't, you know, have a a mechanism as a town to control more than that. This is an issue going back to Toby's comments about um what happened at the time of reassessment and where there was a a massive erosion of neighborhood character. It was this very neighborhood that spurred the town to embark on the neighborhood character initiative, and it was concern about preserving the character of this neighborhood. Um, and I I I guess, you know, it it's, I just want to reiterate, granting the subdivision does not in any way, um, I I mean, not granting the subdivision does not maintain the character of the neighborhood. What you will have is a massive, supersized house, which, and if that's what you want, then just come to the planning board and be honest about it. But that is what, th- these are the real options. And I will just say I live on the other side of the shopping center where we're facing the same challenges, and there are a number of lots that have been subdivided. And there are two houses that fit. Now, price point, you could argue, are they missing middle, not missing middle? Who even knows what that means in Princeton? But um, from in in terms of how they physically fit in with what has been a traditionally middle-class neighborhood in Princeton, you drive down and they look similar. There are a number of large lots in which the houses have been torn down and a McMansion has been put in its place. And that does not preserve the character. It does not preserve the streetscape. These McMansions on these lots from my perspective are more um, do more to destroy, at least from an aesthetic perspective, the continuity and 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 that the the character of the built environment, the economics. It's a whole other story. There we're limited in what we can do. But in terms of, I mean, the neighbors need to understand the structure that's there and that size is not going to remain. No one, unless that person decides to stay in their house and keep that. But once they sell that, and every neighbor should also know that at a certain point, they're going to be deciding to sell their their house. And it's interesting how when people decide to sell their house, they all of a sudden don't want those restrictions. Uh, you know, that they have wanted others to abide by or have wanted to be imposed on 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 them. But that house is not going to remain, and I know this neighborhood. I grew up playing in this neighborhood. Um, I understand the wish to keep it as similar as it was. Um, but someone is going to buy that lot, and here's what they're going to do, a McMansion or two smaller, smaller, less large houses. Those are options. Or as some people, I mean, I appreciated the people who advocated for a McMansion and ADU, at least they were being honest. I'm not sure why that is more preferable. But one thing we do know, it's that whoever buys that lot, it is bought. But those types of lots, what they will replace it with is not what's there. And I would love for the neighbors, you know, to, I would love to hear from them at the next hearing, given the realistic constraints of what are options here, what they would prefer. Uh, you know, um, but we can all say that, yes, we would like to have more affordable housing there. That, unless the neighbors want to pull, put together a fund and, you know, I mean, we we get into some very challenging economic, you know, complexities there. But uh, the other uh point I just want to make was someone said, well, we don't know whether it's, you know, it it may be four, four structures, two ADUs and two houses, which was the application we heard previously. You know, I think as Councilman Cohen, um, you know, discussed with with the uh, with Mr. Kennedy, um, that is not an option. Um, they have an application for two houses, which will take up the maximum FAR. It it does not seem that the board is inclined to grant additional FAR. So it's, here are the options, one large house, two less large houses, um, or one large house and one ADU, and that's it. So. I think it's really important for us all to remain within the framework of reality and not what we would in theory like to have, but what is actually possible.
If I may, this is a follow-up. Um, I think Justin might have even said at the beginning, this is just a subdivision, but I think here, given that they have presented what they're going to do as two houses, and they've asked us to rely on that, I think we could limit it to two houses. Um, in addition, I think Justin makes a really interesting point about FAR in his memo, where he says, okay, we're not going to be proportioning FAR. But in addition to that, the board should consider reducing the FAR up, consistent with the reduction in the size of the lot below what's required. And uh, he came up with, if you did it that way, and it's on first and second pages of his report, the FAR would be point two, three percent. I I think the board can do that also, and uh, it's just something for the board to consider.
Um, for laypeople, um, the FAR means floor area ratio. Um, thanks for that, Mr. Muller. Um, Owen?
Thank you. I would thank uh David and Mia for pointing out a very important point about the fact that if we don't sub-subdivide the slot, then it is an as-right build, and we can impose no restriction on what, on what goes up there.
And you wind up with two, two houses in any event.
We may wind up.
Most, most likely.
Or one monster.
Monster, there'd probably be a monster.
I do want to, but I, and I also want to uh, was actually going to say something about Justin's uh proposal about reducing the FAR uh to fit the the lot size. You know, we we should probably consider that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So it's um eleven oh four. Um, I want to wrap up, obviously, and I think it's important to get squared away on what we want the applicant to come back with. And if we can identify a date, um, then we can carry this uh with no further notice unless I'm using the wrong words.
You know, it's the right words.
Um, so, so what I have heard is um, an interest in um a stormwater management plan um in uh limit uh, limiting the FAR to point two, three percent.
Um. Madam Chair, if I may, you know, that wasn't really, aside from just the very end discussed and.
Thirty-six percent impervious cover. That was another thing I heard. I'm just saying things that I've heard. I I I understand what you're saying, because earlier in the meeting, we talked about a a thirty percent or twenty-five percent FAR. So I I would like to get square on what the board wants to see so that um, we don't um, you know, move. you know, move the goalposts for the applicant.
So maybe Justin could just clarify what he was. I didn't see that part of the memo, so.
Sure. So basically, conditions can be put on variances. If the variance request is to have a 0.23 acre lot or 0.25 is required, then if you do the math, you know, because it's 0.25, it actually comes out pretty good. You could potentially impose 0.23 FAR on it. Now, of course, FAR is a ratio. So, you know, 0.25 is already smaller than, than what would have been allowed on one lot. But of course, to fit in with the neighborhood, I think it's fair to limit or reduce the way that the amount of floor area ratio in alignment with the way that the size is, is being reduced or being asked to be reduced.
With apologies of the late hour, I just want to, you know, be clear about what we might be coming back with. You know, the Princeton's ordinance and to Mr. Lesko's point, it is a ratio. And the only ordinance on point here is actually a bonus for undersized lots. If you looked at the undersized lots of the neighborhood, they would receive a floor area bonus. We talked about perhaps jettisoning that and going to just a straight ratio. This kind of, I'll just say regressive floor area for undersized lots would, I don't know what the math does, but you know, when we're looking at a $5,000, $5,000 square foot as-of-right, single-family home or 4,000 square foot, you know, as was described by some people in the board of McMansion and an ADU, I just don't want to do the math here after we've heard this at the last hour and come back with something that just doesn't work or make sense for the neighborhood. The idea of proportional floor area is so that the homes generally are around the same size, so that a slightly undersized lot has a bit of a bonus to allow it to match generally with the lots that are of the exact correct size. I can understand to an extent, though, we would argue, you know, against it, not giving that bonus when a lot is being created that's undersized. But to go the other way, when the only, only ordinance.